Everyone. The time is 6:55. We are now going into the public hearing. And this is the public hearing that deals with revisions to the open space assessment ordinance. Sheila, roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Here.
Mayor Crisati.
Here.
Councillor Despard.
Here.
Councillor Finger.
Here.
Councillor Hopkins.
Here.
Councillor Ludwig.
Here.
Councillor Mangini.
Here.
Councillor Nelson.
Here.
Councillor Pisner.
Here.
Councillor Santinella. And Councillor Ungary.
Here.
Eleven members are present and none are absent.
The following notice of public hearing was published in the Hartford Current on Tuesday, September 12, 2023, Town of Enfield Legal Notice. The Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Council Hall Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, September 18, 2023, at 6:55 p.m. to allow interested residents an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the revisions to the open space assessment ordinance dated this eighth day of September, 2023. Sheila M. Bailey, Town Clerk. The ground rules for the public hearing. There is no time limit, but I ask that each person not to take too much time so that everyone will have an opportunity to speak. After each person who desires had one chance to speak, I'll permit others who desire a second chance. After those individuals desire to speak a second time, I shall permit those individuals a third and fourth time if necessary. Please refrain from personalities. Before we get going, I will turn this over to the Town Manager, Ellen Zappus-Sassu.
Good evening. So I just wanted to preface your public hearing with letting you know that the documents that you have in your packet tonight are the revised ordinance, which show with the yellow highlights. I also included a copy of what the M-30 form would look like for residents who are seeking the classification. And I also included a memo that has a bunch of very good points in it from the Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission, Karen LaPlante, who I believe will be testifying tonight. So what you see in front of you is a revision to the original open space classification ordinance that you adopted this summer. The assessor, the Conservation Commission, and I have all gone through this and made some changes that are going to make it easier to use and easier for people who may be eligible to understand the requirements and also, frankly, the penalties. So that's what's in front of you tonight. Because of the last-minute nature of incorporating all of these changes, I did not put it on tonight's agenda for consideration. All you have right before you is the public hearing. If after the public hearing, your comfort level is such, you could, in fact, bring it onto the table and you could add it to the agenda and you could schedule it and we could take it up for... Do we have to have a public hearing again for changes? Another one? So after tonight, you could adopt it as revised and it would go into effect in 15 days or so. At that point, we are already in the process of taking in applications for people who are interested. That would make it easier because we would have a lot more time to explain it to them. I think that Ms. LaPlante will also tell you tonight that the Conservation Commission is going to act as an advocate on behalf of people who may have questions or who are interested in this program. And they are going to hold a meeting on October 10 where people are invited to come. They will have GIS. They will explain to people what their qualifications would be in terms of entering the program. And I think that that will be a great way of having people understand how easy it is for be able to do this based on how this ordinance is written. You can obviously make changes and further technical revisions to the document in front of you. And in fact, I think Ms. LaPlante has one that we might have missed in the merging of the various documents in terms of where something should be located. So I'll leave that for her to discuss. But as you go through tonight's public hearing, please know that this ordinance also can continually be work in progress. As we go through our first application process and have people come in, over the course of the next few months, we can obviously revise it again for next year if need be.
Okay, thank you. Before I start calling people up, today, late evening, or actually, late afternoon, I did receive a couple of letters. And the first one was from the Connecticut Water Company. And the Connecticut Water Company is requesting that the council revise the open space assessment ordinance to allow the water company lands to be eligible for open space designation. This is a quite lengthy letter, but that is the basic request that they are asking for. So I will be submitting that in. It's something that we can take a look at. And then the second one was from the Hazardville Water Company. And once again, they are requesting the council revise the open space assessment ordinance to allow the water company lands eligible for open space designation. Once again, they are submitting this letter in. I would like to give these to the town clerk and have these on record so that with further discussion, we can take a look at this a little closer. Thank you. With that, I will now open up anybody to come forward for the... This is for the public hearing.
Yeah, I think we have to open it first.
What's that?
I don't think we've opened a public hearing officially yet.
Yeah, we did. I opened it up beforehand. I went through everything, Mike. Okay, so the public hearing is open. Now, you're going to be talking about the open space ordinance? Okay, so that's not part of the public hearing. We will call you after for regular. Karen.
Good evening. Karen LaPlante, 166 North Babel Street, Enfield, Connecticut. And my comments tonight, I make as a citizen, but also as an individual of the Conservation Commission with knowledge about this open space assessment ordinance. I would first like to say I appreciate the efforts the Town Manager has put into getting this ordinance passed and now possibly revised to obtain the goals that we have not only that we have in not only our POCD, but have strived for for many years. Back in 2016, 2017, I put together a PowerPoint presentation for the Town Council regarding our open space goals. The state has placed an open space goal of 21% of Connecticut land to be set aside for open space land, 10% of the goal by the state and 11% by municipalities, land trusts, and water companies. Enfield has approximately 18,800 acres in town. That would place our target at just under 3,950 acres. The state share of 10% would be about 1,880 acres. Our share would be 2,068 acres. As of 2016, the state of Connecticut DEP had protected 367 acres, mostly along the Scenic River. And all the vacant-owned land, vacant land owned by the town, okay? This is just town-owned vacant land accounted for 729 acres. I don't know if we still own all that. Not all of this vacant land owned by the town is considered protected open space. If I include the additional 615 acres of land owned by the water companies and the land trust, we are now closer, but in a best-case scenario, for our 11%, we are at 1,344 acres. And the goal, again, would be 2,068. That leaves the state short by about 1,500 acres and the town short by at least 724 acres for a total of over 2,200 acres being short. A little has changed since 2016, 2017, and we have been trying to better identify protected open space, but we have not been able to search deeds and land records to better qualify these numbers. At that time, we also had only 3,916 vacant acres in private ownership. So out of the 2,200 acres we needed, there was only 3,900 vacant acres available. And that included small quarter-acre lots and things in small, little strips. It doesn't leave much vacant land. I think the assessor had a more recent list of approximately only 2,000 vacant parcels available. So you can see how much that's gone down in just a few years. The town could work with the state, the Northern Connecticut Land Trust, and the water companies to permanently preserve additional land and reach our goal of 3,950 acres. The Chair and Vice Chair of the Conservation Commission have agreed the Commission will assist property owners during our October meeting on the 10th and schedule special meetings if necessary to assist in paperwork and determination of partial lot open space. We reviewed, we will review the paperwork presented by landowners, review proposed properties, and make a recommendation to the assessor's office on compatibility with the ordinance. Landowners will still have the ability to dispute the assessor's decision if they do not agree with the results. I support the clarifications made regarding the 50% valuation and how the total acreage will be determined. I have also read the correspondence from Connecticut Water Company and feel compelled to agree with their arguments. I would also ask that you consider striking number six in its entirety. The other item that I had suggested pretty late to the Town Manager was on 4B, which is highlighted in yellow, when determining total acreage of undeveloped land. I'm thinking that either needs to be up in the criteria area or under the valuation area, not under the termination and conveyance tax, because it really doesn't have to do with the conveyance tax. It has to do with how we're going to determine the total acreage and so forth. So I would suggest moving that into one of those other categories that exist. But other than that, we're happy. And maybe you won't hear from me for a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and discuss? Yes.
Gretchen Pfeiffer-Hall, 4 Summers Road, Enfield, Connecticut. Good evening. I'm also a member of the Enfield Conservation Commission, but speaking as a private citizen. I'm strongly in favor of the adoption of the proposed open space assessment ordinance. This will be one more tool to protect open space in our town and will enable property owners to continue to store land that may have been in their families for many years and hopefully many more to come. It will also enable new owners to keep the limited large parcels left in Enfield intact rather than force them to subdivide or develop open space. This ordinance will help to maintain and enhance the conservation of natural and scenic resources, protect streams and water supply, protect habitat for wildlife, protect air quality, conserve soils and wetlands, which will help mitigate flooding. It enhances the quality of life for all residents and has a positive impact on property values, especially those in close proximity. By leaving land as open space, we may actually reduce expenses in the long term, as open space has the lowest cost for use of community services. Adoption of this ordinance will have a positive impact on our town and make it a more attractive, desirable community to existing and new residents. And I would also be in favor of striking number six regarding water company eligibility. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Kathleen Vos, 16 Powder Hill Road in Enfield. This is going to be quick. As a member of the Conservation Commission, I wanted to express my support for this ordinance. We have worked on this for a long time, and I think it's very, very important for the town in general. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to come in front of the council?
Good evening. Donna Dubanowski, 23 Betty Road. Open space should be left open up to the Conservation Commission to make all the final decisions. As long as they're the ones making the decisions, I'd be happy with it. And it should be, if it's three acres, taking out whatever the house is. If it's an R-44, remove the one acre and leave the other two in. If it's an R-88, remove the two acres, but let the remaining land, if it's unused and not built upon, it should go into the open space program. And let's make sure that anybody who's eligible gets a fair share. The residents want the open space, and we hate that we keep building upon every piece of land in town. So if we can get our residents to support their own open space, let's do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at the public hearing? For a second time? Third? I declare the public hearing closed. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Enfield Town Council Regular Meeting, September 18. The time is 7:10. This meeting can also be viewed on YouTube and ETV. We will start tonight's meeting with Ken Nelson with the prayer.
Remind us, Father, that we are in this position not to be served, but to serve the public, just as Christ, who is King, came not to be served, but to serve and ultimately die on the cross to save us. I also pray, Father, that we will uphold what is moral and rational in Jesus' name. I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sheila, roll call, please.
Councillor Nelson.
Here.
Councillor Pisner.
Here.
Councillor Santinella.
Here.
Councillor Ungary.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Here.
Mayor Crisati.
Here.
Councillor Despard.
Here.
Councillor Finger.
Here.
Councillor Hopkins.
Here.
Councillor Ludwig.
Here.
Councillor Mangini.
Here.
Eleven members are present, none are absent.
Okay, next, the fire evacuation announcement. In the event of a fire, there are exits in the back of the chambers and to my left, audience is right. Please go down the stairs and exit into the parking lot. Next, minutes of preceding meetings. The first one, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of the special meeting on August 21, 2023? Councillor Mangini and a second by Councillor Ungary. By show of hands, all.
I have a correction, sorry. Sorry, on page three, I know some, page three, the first one. Councillor, my last name is CK. Not Ludwig, Ludwig. Thank you. Easy one. I know it a spell.
I think I saw that spelling somewhere else.
I'm sure I missed it, I know.
I had a new secretary doing it in my office, and I thought I caught them all. Sorry.
It's funny, there is, there is actually someone named that.
Yeah, well, we don't, we don't want that, so. All right, moving ahead by show of, show of hands, all in favor. Unanimous, 11-0. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, August 21, 2023? Councillor Mangini and a second by Councillor Ungary. By the show of hands, all in favor.
I got a question. I got something. There's something missing from these minutes. There was a comment that I made after Councillor Nelson about the statement made by Councillor Despard, and it's missing. I'm not looking to amend it, but I just want to know, I thought we got these things upgraded to where we, where we got to the point to where everything that we say basically is recorded and then put onto these minutes. Again, I'm not looking to amend anything, but I just want to make sure that if we're paying somebody to do this, or a company, or whoever the case may be, your secretary, that everything is standing, because it was very important to me that these were not on there. But again, I just want to know what happened, why it wasn't put on there. Maybe they didn't catch my voice over this, I'm not sure. But it was things that I did say that I thought was important to me that was not put on there.
So the new software we have, it's actually the opposite. We've taken a lot of commentary out of the minutes now because now our video is all bookmarked to the exact votes in the comments, so anyone can read them. So if you look at a lot of the votes on the individual items, there are no comments. We have comments for public communications and councillor communications, but in the actual items, they're not there. Everything is bookmarked on the website to the actual sections of our agenda.
Right, but I still think it stinks because that was important, that was, that I mentioned. But thank you.
Thank you. By show of hands, all in favor. Against? Abstentions? Ten in favor, one against. Next, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting, September 7, 2023? Councillor Mangini and a second by Deputy Mayor Sikala. By show of hands, all in favor. Unanimous, 11-0. All right, next on the item, special guests. Before we begin the special guest portion of the meeting, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the members of the Daughters of the American Revolution chapter that are in attendance today, and we're going to present them with a proclamation for Constitution Week. And I would ask Councillor Mangini to join me at the front of the dais for this, being a member of the DAR. Good evening. We have a proclamation declaring the week of September 17 through the 23, 2023, as Constitution Week in the Town of Enfield. Whereas more than two centuries after our founding fathers gathered on September 17, 1787 in Philadelphia, our nation continues to be guided by the Constitution for the United States of America. And whereas the Constitution of the United States reflects our ideals and establishes a practical system of government and provides three separate branches, the legislative, executive, and judicial. And whereas the Constitution protects the rights of our citizens and maintains the rule of law, and whereas during Constitution Week, we reaffirm our commitment to its stated purposes, to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Now therefore, I, Bob Crisati, the mayor of the Town of Enfield, on behalf of the Town Council and the Town Administration and the entire community, do hereby proclaim, September 17 through September 23, 2023, as Constitution Week in the Town of Enfield, encourage the citizens of Enfield to honor the achievements of our founders while taking the time to reflect on the rights and privileges of our citizenship. So thank, thank you very much. Would you like to say a few words?
I am Gigi Landry, the Vice Region of the Penelope Terry Abbey Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Thank you for recognizing Constitution Week and celebrating the Constitution's 236th anniversary. In 1955, the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution petitioned Congress with a revolution to observe this week for the foundation of the American form of government. This resolution was officially enacted by President Eisenhower on August 2, 1956. President George W. Bush officially declared the inception of the Constitution Week in 2002. The observance runs annually from September 17 through September 23. The commitment of the DAR is to encourage study and educate the public about the Constitution, which was adopted by the American Congress of the Confederation on September 17, 1787. The 100-day debate, also known as Constitution Convention, was one of the most momentous occurrences in U.S. history. The events that took place would set the course towards becoming what we know now as the United States of America. The Committee of Detail was a committee established at the convention to create a draft reflecting the agreements made at the convention. It was chaired by John Rutledge from South Carolina. The other members included Edmund Randolph from Virginia, James Wilson from Pennsylvania, and Nathaniel Gorham from Massachusetts, and our very own Oliver Ellsworth from Windsor, Connecticut. Oliver and Roger Sherman was created what is known as Connecticut Compromise. This is the agreement that the large and small states reached and established the two-house legislative structure. Oliver also proposed the name "The United States" to identify the government under the authority of the Constitution. The DAR is honored to own the home of the founding father and make it available to the public. Again, thank you for recognizing Constitution Week.
Thank you very much. Thank you. This month, ladies and gentlemen, is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And during this segment, we're acknowledging Suicide Awareness Month and the various work that is being done every day by the Town Department, especially the schools, social services, the police, and the EMS. Unfortunately, there is a growing epidemic that's happening with younger age groups. Many of you remember the youth suicides that happened a decade ago and sparked a variety of programs and responses. Unfortunately, we continue to see this happen. Well, tonight, I do have a proclamation that I am going to present as declaring September as Suicide Awareness Month in the Town of Enfield. And then when I'm going to be finished with this, then I am going to call a parent, Ms. Rodriguez, Tammy Rodriguez, is going to come up and speak on behalf of Suicide Awareness Month here in Town of Enfield. And the proclamation reads as follows. Suicide is a major public health problem that has far-reaching personal, social, and economic implications. Despite increased awareness, research funding, and national agendas in the United States, suicide deaths have been rising without pause since 1999, and whereas suicide is the third-leading cause of death for ages 10 to 24, second-leading cause of death for ages 25 to 34, and the fourth-leading cause of death for ages 35 to 44. And whereas more than three times as many people died by suicide in Connecticut in recent years than alcohol-related motor vehicle accidents. Now therefore, I, Bob Crisati, the mayor of the Town of Enfield, on behalf of the Town Council, the Town Administration, and the entire community, do hereby declare September as Suicide Awareness Month in the Town of Enfield, and remember our loved ones that we have lost while committing town resources to ensure these numbers decrease. At this time, I would like to have come forward, Tammy Rodriguez, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Crisati. Good evening. My name's Tammy Rodriguez. September is Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month. I never in my life expected to be on this side of the microphone telling why this month is so extremely important to myself and my family. Selena Rodriguez was a beautiful, vibrant... So these are just a few reasons why prevention and awareness is now my life mission. I don't want anyone else to have reasons to hate days of the week, to hate dates of the month. Suicide is 100% preventable. We all need to do our part. We need to check in on our friends and family, because many can steal their pain very well. And my most important message is to be kind. It's easy, it's free, and you'll feel better, too. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, next, we're going to move onward to public communications. And once again, before I start, I just want to remind everyone of proper decorum when we're here. And remember, you'll have five minutes to address the council. And one thing that I just, please refrain from any personal attacks on anybody. We're not going to respond during public communications, but a reminder again, it's not a forum to air grievances or discuss employees. When you come up, just state your name and address. You'll have five minutes to address the council. Okay. George.
George Young, A. Holly Lane, Enfield. I'd first like to thank Councilman Nick Hopkins for his service to the council in District 4. Thanks, Nick. As someone said to me, we can go without the school department for the day, the town hall can shut down for the day, and most other areas we would not miss for the day, and maybe for many days. We cannot go without the water pollution control facility for a day without significant impact all over town. Last month, I asked about the 2324 Water Pollution Control Budget. I felt the budget expenses were overstated because of the interest for the current and the next several years on the CWF loan, and the bonding portions for portions of the $36 million referendum passed for the Water Pollution Control Authority. By now, the council should have received an explanation on the CWF loans of $23 million as to why the interest expense is $432,000 for years 23 and 24, and years 21 and 22 were $283,000 and $700,000 respectively. That four-year total interest would be $1,847,100. The projected interest payments for the Clean Water Fund loan at 2% was supposed to be $1,714,523 for the first four years. That's $132,577 more than the projected interest payment should be. The principal payments, according to the projected payment schedule, was to be amortized at $1,158,462 per year. The total payment per year would then decrease as the interest decreases, as shown on the schedule. There were no charges for interest prior to 2021 for the CWF loan. In the fourth year of the loan, the interest in the budget for 2024 is shown as $432,000, and the interest on the projected payment schedule is $393,877. That's a $38,123 of excess interest. The council needs an explanation, since they are in charge of the WPC budget, as do the taxpayers who have water usage. I presume the bonding of $4.6 million with interest at 2% also started in 2021, but again, there is no logic to the payments for the interest that is shown. The interest shown in the budget for the four years, 2021 through 2024, is $451,777. There was no interest shown in the budget for 2022. The interest in the projected payment schedule for the four years is $345,744. The difference is $106,000 for the four years of excess interest. That is a difference for the two funds of $238,610 for the four-year period. Perhaps someone on the council, the WPC board, should take a look at the sign notes in the payment schedule for principal and interest and compare them to the original referendum that we all were involved with. Is everyone on the same page? Sometimes it is the intangibles that no one seems to look at when it comes time to do the budgeting. Have the quarterly sewer service fee bills gone out for the usage within this quarter, the third quarter? As I recall, the rates have not changed, but the attachment A on the website has a rate of $5.39 per 1,000 gallons for over 20,000 gallons of usage. But the cost for significant users that have sewer meters was shown at $6.27 per 1,000 gallons, which is higher than last year. That leads, which, and actually, last year was $5.39. That leads to the question as to what is significant user, or is the rate shown just in misprint? Last month, I asked about the Water Pollution Control Fund 2024 Capital Improvement Plan adopted budget on Page 193 of this year's budget book. The council has approved the transfer of $3,500,000 from the federal ARPA monies received to refurbish two of the 16 pump stations, Great Brook and Sparkle Street, that the residents approved as part of the CWF fund loan, and the bonding, as mentioned previously by me. Why wasn't some of that ARPA monies used for projects to better the town, such as refurbishment of Brainerd Park? Thank you for now.
My name is Michelle Wilcox. I live at 5 Cheryl Drive. I have lived there for 28 years and have enjoyed a quiet, well-kept neighborhood that is tucked into the woods. I have excellent neighbors and I love the area. At the end of April, construction work began on my street, Edmund Lane, and Stephen Drive. The residents on these streets endured nearly 17 weeks of construction, in which the road was unpaved. We constantly heard the droning of machines as our homes rattled from the heavy machinery. This may be a consequence of construction, but my question is, why did this work take so long? Because of the work done in my yard, there was a large sinkhole that I felt posed a danger. It was left exposed. I had to go to the town hall with a picture of it on my phone before it got roped off. I believe a plank should have been placed over it. On July 20, an excavator that weighed 18,000 pounds was left on my front yard without my permission. It sat there for five days. I called Hinkley Construction Company twice to inform them that they needed to remove the machine from my private property. Both times, no one answered the phone, and I had to leave a message. Hinkley neglected to call back. Again, I had to take pictures and send them to the town hall before anything was done. My lawn has two large ruts from the weight of that machine. If someone falls and gets hurt, I am liable. I am aware the town owns the first 10 feet of my property from the road, but this machine was well beyond the 10 feet and has ruined part of my lawn. In fact, my lawn was ruined in many places. When Hinkley reseeded the end of my yard, there were weeds everywhere. Clearly, either the topsoil or the seed was compromised. I have an app on my phone that analyzes types of grass. I took five pictures along the edge of my grass where it had been reseeded. Each picture identified an invasive weed that chokes native grass. It will cost me and my neighbors an additional amount of money out of pocket to correct. The new catch basins had a canvas piece which catches the silt when it rains. If the silt has been removed from the canvas piece on a more consistent basis, we would not have to endure standing water after a rainstorm. Even with the road paved, we have flooding because the debris is not being cleared out of the bag and around the catch basin. This is ultimately a responsibility of the town. You can see where my front yard is eroding in that area. Speaking of eroding, the letter we received from the town stated that we would be getting curbs. When we asked a representative of the town about curbs, we were told that the money had run out for that. How does that happen? We, meaning my neighbors and I, would like to see the original contract with Hinkley Construction Company. We would also like an explanation as to where the money went, if it isn't being spent on our neighborhood. We were told by the town that the drains work perfectly and Hinkley has done an excellent job. There is a disconnect between what is actually happening and what is perceived by town leadership. You are the people who represent us. I am asking for your help in this matter. I ask you. Is leaving a nine-ton excavator on someone's private property without their permission a sign of excellence? Is underreporting the amount of flooding in the front of my driveway by municipal workers a sign of excellence? Mr. Hopkins came to my home and measured the amount of water in front of my house. It was closer to five inches. It was not two inches. Is replacing a well-maintained, re-treed yard with invasive weeds that choke native grass a sign of excellence? I see the way questions, from my standpoint, the only excellence I see is the way questions are deflected, jobs left unfinished, emails and phone calls left unanswered, and irrigation systems ruined. Imagine how I felt paying my tax bill in July. I have asked for the help of this council, specifically, the council at large. We are your constituents. Some of the members have responded to my requests, and some members have ignored my requests. Please understand, every resident on Cheryl Drive, Edmund Lane, and Stephen Drive will know who chose to be involved and who chose to be indifferent. We will see you in November as we cast our vote. Sincerely, Michelle Wilcox. I think my time is up, correct? Is that what that beeping is? Okay. And I do have pictures, if any council member would like to see them.
Or anyone else.
My name is Kathleen Kelly. I reside at 2 V. M. Buon Road. I've lived there since 1977. It's a great neighborhood, great neighbors, but I would like to know, is there an ordinance that addresses people that collect a lot of trash behind their house, and also that have vehicles that are no longer in working order and not registered on their property? Another thing, too, is there any kind of ordinance or rule against obscene signs in their yard? Because there are. And if there is no ordinance, I sincerely wish this would be made up to be one, because it's really an eyesore. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melanie Dubiel, 4 Francis Avenue in Enfield.
So here we are again, starting all over. I have to say, I don't believe not one of you, when you said this decision was a difficult one to make. I feel as though you were sneaky and deceitful, the way you slid the decision into a last-minute meeting without any of us being there. The last town council meeting, you were supposed to decide, and then you took it off the agenda and proceeded to make it a decision without us. I find it very difficult that you are all not in cahoots with Jimmy's Pub. It was too quiet on the street for two weeks prior to your decision. Then you make it, and then the first thing Friday morning, the signs are down, and that night, all the problems start again. Parking on both sides of the street, making it difficult to get down the street, disruptive patrons being very loud, walking back to their cars at 2:00 in the morning. My son, who parks his car on the street since he's had his license, had his truck hit from a patron that came out of Jimmy's Pub. And the guy tried leaving. If my son hadn't heard them coming out of the pub or walking down the street in front of our house, he wouldn't have seen them hit his truck and tried taking off. He had to go out, run out of our front door while my daughter was yelling for us that someone hit my son's truck. So, once again, my husband and I are awakened at 1:00 in the morning and have to get up, call the police, so they can come down and take a report. We didn't end up going back to bed till a little after 2:00 in the morning. That's not okay. As I am on social media, and because people are following this Francis Avenue, I see a post that Jimmy's Pub is having a counselor karaoke night on October 13. In case nobody's seen, and it's all paid for by the Democratic Committee. How convenient that you make the decision that benefits them and then have a fundraiser for the Democrats. This sounds like a code of ethics violation. As stated on Enfield forums with people who are seeing what's going on in Francis Avenue, you are a disgrace to this town and what it stands for. I hope everyone watching this meeting realizes that a business that was a restaurant turned into a bar in a residential neighborhood takes precedence over the residents' quality of life in the town of Enfield. And I hope when they go into polls in November, they make the right vote. This isn't over, and we will be up here every meeting, still fighting for our quality of life issues, so we can have our peaceful nights back when we come home after a long day's work. A home is where you spend quality time with family and lay your head down at night for a peaceful, quiet night, not to be woken up at all hours of the night by unruly rude people. You have the power to make things right and do residential parking only on Francis Avenue, just like what was done on Powder Ridge Road. Give us back our peaceful and quiet nights we deserve. So, the second night, my son's truck was hit. This is where somebody, the other night, revved up their engine so loud, they blew their motor. This is the oil that is left over on our street from, I don't know, I think it was three days afterwards I took this, so it still looks like this today. This is not okay. I don't know why you people made the decision you did. You're obviously, I don't know, if you want more money, then pay the police officers more money, and we'll fund you. I don't understand how each and every one of you thinks that this is okay. And, you know, you make a decision for a bar in a residential neighborhood, and not one of you, except for Nick Hopkins, have come to us and asked us, I know you've been eating at Jimmy's Pub, I know your guys are eating at Jimmy's Pub, not one of you came to us and asked us how our feelings are. You sit here and listen to us. He has lied, saying that they gave him permission to park on the streets. That was a lie, right on the planning zone, oh, yes, on the planning zone, yeah. He's having DJs, he's not allowed to have DJs. He's been caught in so many lies, and yet you still gave him permission, and now we are back to square one, getting up, fighting this, having our streets ruined. I'm sorry that, Counselor Despard, you think it's okay that, you know, your friend's truck gets hit and just pay the deductible? I don't have money, I've got two kids under 21 that are driving. So, to pay a deductible and get his truck fixed, he's made three payments on this truck, and now he's got a foot-long debt in it, and so we're still...
Or anyone else.
My name is Kathleen Kelly. I reside at 2 V. on Buren Road. I've lived there since 1977. It's a great neighborhood, great neighbors, but I would like to know, is there an ordinance that addresses people that collect a lot of trash behind their house and also that have vehicles that are no longer in working order and not registered on their property? Another thing, too, is there any kind of ordinance or rule against obscene signs in their yard? Because there are. And if there is no ordinance, I sincerely wish this would be made up to be one because it's really an eyesore. Thank you.
Melanie Dubiel, 4 Francis Avenue in Enfield. So here we are again, starting all over. I have to say, I don't believe not one of you, when you said this decision was a difficult one to make. I feel as though you were sneaky and deceitful the way you slid the decision into a last-minute meeting without any of us being there. The last, the last meeting about, the last town council meeting, you were supposed to decide and then you took it off the agenda and proceeded to make it a decision without us. I find it very difficult that you are all not in cahoots with Jimmy's Pub. It was too quiet on the street for two weeks prior to your decision. Then you make it, and then the first thing Friday morning, the signs are down. And that night, all the problems start again. Parking on both sides of the street, making it difficult to get down the street, disruptive patrons being very loud, walking back to their cars at 2:00 in the morning. My son, who parks his car on the street since he's had his license, had his truck hit and, from a patron that came out of Jimmy's Pub. And the guy tried leaving. If my son hadn't heard them coming out of the pub or walking down the street in front of our house, he wouldn't have seen them hit his truck and try taking off. He had to go out, run out of our front door while my daughter was yelling for us that someone hit my son's truck. So once again, my husband and I are awakened at 1:00 in the morning and have to get up, call the police so they can come down and take a report. We didn't end up going back to bed till a little after 2:00 in the morning. That's not okay. As I am on social media and because people are following this Francis Avenue, I see a post that Jimmy's Pub is having a counselor karaoke night on October 13th. In case nobody's seen, and it's all paid for by the Democratic Committee. How convenient that you make the decision that benefits them and then have a fundraiser for the Democrats. This sounds like a code of ethics violation. As stated on Enfield forums with people who are seeing what's going on in Francis Avenue, you are a disgrace to this town and what it stands for. I hope everyone watching this meeting realizes that a business that was a restaurant turned into a bar in a residential neighborhood takes precedence over the residents' quality of life in the town of Enfield. And I hope when they go into polls in November, they make the right vote. This isn't over, and we will be up here every meeting still fighting for our quality of life issues so we can have our peaceful nights back when we come home after a long day's work. A home is where you spend quality time with family and lay your head down at night for a peaceful, quiet night, not to be woken up at all hours of the night by unruly rude people. You have the power to make things right and do residential parking only on Francis Avenue, just like what was done on Powder Ridge Road. Give us back our peaceful and quiet nights we deserve. So the second night, my son's truck was hit. This is where somebody the other night revved up their engine so loud, they blew their motor. This is the oil that is left over on our street from, I don't know, I think it was three days afterwards I took this. So it still looks like this today. This is not okay. I don't know why you people made the decision you did. You're obviously, I don't know, if you want more money, then pay the police officers more money and we'll fund you. I don't understand how each and every one of you thinks that this is okay. And, you know, you make a decision for a bar to, in a residential neighborhood, and not one of you, except for Nick Hopkins, have come to us and asked us, I know you've been eating at Jimmy's Pub, I know your guys are eating at Jimmy's Pub, not one of you came to us and asked us how our feelings are. You sit here and listen to us. He has lied saying that they gave him permission to park on the streets. That was a lie, right on the planning zone, oh, yes, on the planning zone, yeah. He's having DJs, he's not allowed to have DJs. He's been caught in so many lies, and yet you still gave him permission, and now we are back to square one, getting up, fighting this, having our streets ruined. I'm sorry that Counselor Despard, you think it's okay that, you know, your friend's truck gets hit and just pay the deductible? I don't have money. I've got two kids under 21 that are driving. So to pay a deductible and get his truck fixed, he's made three payments on this truck, and now he's got a foot-long debt in it, and so we're still waiting. Now we have to go through insurance and everything else. It's not okay that we have to pay for this when this isn't our fault. I can't afford the insurance because somebody else hits my car because they're coming out of Jimmy's Pub and you people still just let it go. So, again, we're asking, and I will be at every single meeting until whatever, complaining and bringing everything up. We're still having the problem and you guys don't understand.
You don't care, never mind understand. You don't care. You sided with him. Two of us under the bus.
Because he's paid.
It's not a residential and a business problem either.
Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council?
Susan Budd, 2 Francis Avenue. I'm confused on the role of the town council. I would like to hear from each one of you what you believe your role is to be as a council person. What's your duty to the public? I do want to hear an answer from each one of you if possible. Also, I don't think you're, I heard your reasons on the vote to take the residential parking signs down. We weren't allowed at that meeting, so we have no idea, but I would, I am very interested in hearing your reasons of why you're against us so bad. It was stated it's not the town's problem, it's between the business and the residents. Well, it is the business of the town. You are the ones that allowed this to happen. This was a restaurant with a bar that you allowed to turn into a full bar with not sufficient It was also stated that you can't go along with residential parking only as other streets will expect the same. If you can't support residential parking only, then how do you propose to give us the quality of life back since this establishment became a bar? You should have a higher loyalty to the residents over a business. This issue is not going away. We have the right to live in an environment free of noise that continuously jeopardizes our health, safety, and welfare. We never had any issues prior to the town allowing this restaurant to turn into a full-fledged bar without sufficient parking. What's your plan to work with the residents of Francis Avenue to ensure that we have the quality of life we deserve and had prior, and had prior to the renovations, that we had prior to the renovations made at Jimmy's Pub? We want to have peace and quality of life without having to endure sex shows in our front yard, used condoms thrown in our yard, glass, throwing bottles and breaking them in our yard, people yelling consistently all hours of the night, confronting us, swearing at us, like we're in the wrong. They're in the wrong for being able to park on our street and confront us. This has all been documented, and every one of you has been sent copies of these videos, but it only lies on deaf ears and blind eyes because nobody cares. This is a town problem and your duty should be to the town people, not only to the business. It's disheartening that you voted to take the residential parking signs down, and immediately after that, the flyer for the Democratic fundraisers posted all over. Why don't you just slap us in the face even more now? Without offering any real solutions, I want to hear what you have to say. This could all go away by implementing residential parking only and enforcing it.
Good evening, everyone. Robert Bukowski, 21 Francis. I'll be discussing two issues tonight. First, I'd like to revisit the Francis Avenue parking ban issue. Second, I'd like to address the Democratic fundraiser celebration party, whatever you want to call it. This is not going to be pleasant. I was quite surprised at the vote at the last town council meeting. After 11 months of everyone agreeing that there was a problem, suddenly the parking ban was lifted and magic, problem solved. My guess is that the primary election did have something to do with it. Maybe, maybe not, who knows? But the problem did not go away. Melanie and Susan addressed that. The problem has not been resolved, even if you choose to ignore it. So my request tonight is to ask you to reconsider the parking ban, Francis Avenue, residents only. You know the drill, 10 to 6, violators will be towed. Not the entire neighborhood, just Francis Avenue. All we need here are six normal people to take another look at this. Five Republicans and one Democrat. That's all we need to solve this problem. We may have an issue with the eight-vote rule regarding the agenda, putting something on the agenda, but if you can't do it tonight, do it for the next meeting. We'll just have to make it suffice. Now, let's assume we do get what we want. Let's assume that we do get no parking and towing. We all know that the towing ban is not going to be enforced. I mean, we're fighting for it, but it's one hurdle at a time. It's just going to be another hurdle to jump over. We will have to fight at every town meeting for the next six months just to have the towing enforced. The police chief reports to the town manager. She has been biased and difficult and uncooperative, from the beginning, just as most of you have been. How many cars have actually been towed at Powder Hollow? That's my point. Probably none, probably none here unless we fight for every inch of this. But vote on it anyway, one little step at a time. Francis Avenue, resident only, 10 to 6, violators will be towed. Now, speaking of six to five votes, now we can address the town manager issue. And we can do it tonight. A six to five vote, the town manager has been very uncooperative on this issue from day one. She's probably the biggest obstacle. Maybe the mayor, maybe the deputy mayor, maybe it's a tie, but anyway. A six to five vote tonight, without putting it on the agenda, can remove the town manager from her position at any time, even tonight if you want to. Six good people, five on one side, one on the other, we can do this. We can get the Francis Avenue problem solved tonight by removing the biggest obstacle here. Someone make a motion, take a five-minute break, discuss it, make a motion, remove her from her position, install the police chief or finance director temporarily. So hopefully you can vote on a Francis Avenue issue tonight. Hopefully you can at least get one major obstacle out of the way, and that would be the town manager. Now, issue number two, Democratic fundraisers, celebration parties, however you want to call it. I've been aware of your bias on this issue from the very beginning. Clearly, and now it's clearly apparent, you don't wish to hide it anymore. So please, when you're at Jimmy's Pub on October 13th or whenever it is, please do not urinate, vomit, fornicate, especially fornicate, on Francis Avenue when your fundraiser at Jimmy's Pub is over. No fornication, please. The doorbell cameras will be on. I would also like to suggest another venue, yet another venue, I'm trying to be helpful, for a Democratic fundraiser, although I'm not sure they would actually allow it. The morals, values, and ethical standards of this particular venue are much higher than the morals, values, and ethical standards of the Enfield Democratic Town Council, five to six members. I'm not speaking to everybody on this issue. This venue would simply not tolerate the type of behavior in their parking lot that you so easily and willingly tolerate on Francis Avenue. And the venue that I'm suggesting is the Mardi Gras Strip Club in East Windsor. But as I've said, I don't think they would have you. The morals, values, and ethical standards of the local strip club are much higher than the morals, values, and ethical standards of the Enfield Democratic Town Council, five out of six members. Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council?
Good evening. Nikki Price, 1324 Enfield Street. After the last council meeting, I reread the commission report by Birch &amp; Moses dated June 1, 2023. One of the recommendations is what the town council should consider and should discuss and consider a limited charter revision for the purpose of amending Chapter 5, Section 4 of the town charter to permit the appointment of alternate BAA members. I would like someone to explain to me, how do we do a limited charter revision? On page 37 of the report, it discusses the effective year built EYB. It's suppressed by most towns as indicated by the Westport and Weston Town Assessors who choose to suppress this information from their taxpayers for the same reasons as Enfield, because the taxpayer is not educated enough to understand the EYB. This practice is legal but is unethical. Finally, I found it odd, the commission report regarding 78 Park Avenue did not address the issue with the tax auction entitled that led to Longies not owning the property and the town attorney not correcting this mistake immediately when discovered. In closing, thank you for allowing me to express my thoughts.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council? Is there anybody else? Second time, George.
George Young, 8 Holly Lane. We now have in the works for people to pay for two new pump stations at a budgeted cost of $838,000 per year for the four years starting in fiscal year 2026. That happens to total out to be $3,352,000, very close to the figure that was moved over from the ARPA funds. I feel like we have been hoodwinked again. Are these two new pump stations replacing existing ones? Why didn't this go to a referendum? The council is using its power to spend that part of non-referendum monies, because I believe the charter allows it to use up to .0002 times the town's current grant list for a project without our approval or referendum, which is probably around $800,000 now. Perhaps the charter could be changed to .0001 and limit their ability to spend uncontrollably. The budget and the mill rate and the sewer usage fees will never go down as long as the council has its spending ability. As I stated last month, I don't feel the taxpayers received the full benefit from the ARPA funds, the federal government passed to the town, because the town used about 27% of the ARPA funds to support the repairs of two pump stations which were funded by referendum. The town also gave $450,000 of ARPA monies in grants to nonprofits and small businesses in town. The grants ranged as high as $25,000 for nonprofits and $35,000 for small businesses. Is there a follow-up to see that the grant monies are spent as requested? What is this follow-up? I'm all set. Thank you. I have copies of these.
Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council? I declare public communications over. We will now move on to counselor communications. Counselor Mangini.
Just, I have a couple of comments. We had a very community weekend here in Enfield. We celebrated Mexican Independence Day. Many of us on the council did attend. Excuse me. We also had Family Day, which was very well-attended by many, especially kids, which I thought was refreshing to see, participating in activities and having fun. So I just want to, you know, bring that out and share with people that we're alive and well and having fun. Thank you.
Counselor Despard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to thank Tammy for her courage of coming here and speaking today on suicide prevention. I was and still am very moved by her. Second, through the merit of the town manager, Ellen, if you could maybe during your report give a response to what the town is doing for Ms. Wilcox's yard, I think that would be helpful. And then Van Buren Road, we absolutely do have blight ordinances, and I would be more than happy, that's in the district I represent, I'd be more than happy to speak with you about that and maybe come by and take a look. And then Francis Road, I do understand your frustration. And, you know, for me, I'll say it again, that when we first put this out there, when we, and for nearly, I think, a year it was resident parking only, I believed that to be temporary while the, while the owner, yeah, while the owner and the residents figured something out. Now, I will say that over the weekend, another resident from Francis Road forwarded an email to the council, and it had a document from the police department that I had never seen before. I think it was from August 2020, 2022. I think it laid out some alternative, alternatives. I did send this to the council as well, particularly one-sided parking. There was concerns about the side of the road and about whether emergency vehicles could get down it. I think that's something I would certainly be willing to look forward, and I've said this much to the council. And then I held office hours last Wednesday. The biggest topics were motor vehicle tax assessment and particularly reimbursement after a successful appeal. And then the craft fair and the farmers market. There's quite a few people that want to see that continue into the winter and fall. I also wanted to mention that today is U.S. Air Force Day, and I just wanted to mention that as a way to honor our men and women in the United States Air Force. And then finally, I would like to make a motion that we do bring the 490 open space ordinance to the, to the table. And I just, I don't want to wait. I do want to revisit the water companies, but I don't want to wait anymore on this. I would like to have it passed. So that's, that's a motion I'd like to make.
We're going to finish counselor communications. We will go back to the motion that was made for the open space. I don't have an issue with, okay, so before we just withdraw the motion and then we'll come back to it.
Withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to speak? Okay. Counselor Nelson, and then I'll say.
Okay, first, I've been doing a lot of work in Thompsonville, and I work across from the pond every day, and it's beautiful. And then I figured I'd take a walk across the bridge. This is what I found. This bridge, people are still walking across it, and this bridge needs to be shut down tonight, and we need to address this immediately if you can pass them to the town manager. There's just plates screwed over holes in the deck. The top trim is off. There's screws sticking up two and three inches from the top of the deck. How we haven't, somebody hasn't got hurt on this bridge is beyond me. It's, it's a total embarrassment, but when you drive down by the pond, it looks beautiful. I mean, minus all the homeless people there, if you can look beyond them. Years ago, we used to put, not that long ago, we used to put signs out front other than taxes due, because that's the number-one sign I hate to see out in front of the town hall. But we had signs that said town council meetings. And a lot of people forget about them, including myself, and I think we should put that sign back out front just to let the traffic know when they drive by, there's a council meeting tonight. It can't hurt to try to get people in to get involved. The concern about the signage, I'll just use that word, and blight issues, you can go to See, Click, Fix and fill that out anonymously, so it's not neighbor against neighbor, and then the town will address that. They will send out somebody to They will send out somebody to address the concerns on it and take action if action is needed. The last one, Francis Avenue, and I wasn't going to say anything, but this is, this is just, the attacks against everybody over Francis Avenue is starting to get a little out of control. Now the attack is on the town manager. I personally was at two meetings the town manager set up with the residents in Jimmy Pub, okay? I don't recall the town manager having a vote on whether we park or no park on Francis Avenue. This council had the vote, and the town manager had zero say in it. So why aren't you blaming the people who did the vote instead of the town manager? And that seems to be happening a lot, you know, over the assessment issues. Nothing's happened because this council hasn't taken action. I don't know where people think the town manager has authority over the council. The town manager does what the majority of the council tells her to do. If you don't like that, change to council. It's that simple. That's your answer. You know, to attack an employee on the floor like this because you didn't get your way, it's not right. And I do support Francis Avenue and the parking ban, and I tried, and Mike tried. We tried to make amendments to get it to pass, and it didn't. So let's work with the people who didn't support it. Let's try to come up with a resolve. I even made a recommendation, maybe you shouldn't get involved politically with signs and photographs. Fell on deaf ears. And we know there's a very contentious issue right now with that, and you just got to stay out of it. And I had to say something, because this is getting crazy, and people are starting to blame people that are trying to be a middleman and work something out, but the ultimate decision fell on this council. So the council should be blamed and not a town staff. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, I have a couple of things that I want to state. I know, but you're going to go after me. Thank you. Yeah, I'm good. All right, first of all, just let me state that whatever was posted there on social media in regard to a Democratic Town Committee fundraiser is not taking place on that at Jimmy's Pub. There was a conflict. This was something that was discussed way before. It's unfortunate that, once I saw that they'd come out, it was taken down immediately. So to relieve your any stressors that you might have, thinking that the Democratic Town Committee is going to have a karaoke or do some things that maybe other residents have done on your yard, isn't going to be taking place. So just let me set that record straight. Okay?
Got it. Okay.
Well, that's, you can respond, whatever, okay? I don't like the attack on the town manager also.
I'll respond to that.
I have the floor. Thank you. Now, one thing that we can do, there was that police report that Chief Fox and Sergeant Meyer that did come out. I think that's something that the Public Safety Committee can take a look at. They can come up with some reasonable recommendations that can be presented to this situation. We definitely hear you loud and clear. We've heard you loud and clear. We tried doing things, but nothing was sufficient. Didn't matter. Do you think towing is going to solve the problem, Bob? I don't think so.
Yeah, I do.
I, well, you know, I'm just saying, maybe we should look at one-side parking. There's other options that can be looked at, and I think that the Public Safety Committee can take a look at that report, and sit down with some people that are on that committee and come up with some recommendations. Now, also this weekend, I just want to mention that the Hall of Fame had their induction ceremony, and I want, once again, want to congratulate the sixty-one, nineteen sixty-one Enfield High football team that won the suburban league. One remaining coach, who is ninety-three years old, was in attendance, along with some of the members that are still living, and I thought that was a great tribute. Also, the eighty-three Fermi Cheerleaders, who won an international competition back in the day, were recognized, along with Jack Griffin, Justine Lombardi, Mike Little, Steve Jones, and Stacy Wilhelm Liever. Great athletes, well-deserved. It was a great evening. Also, I want to recognize that the Women's Club did celebrate their one-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary. So congratulations to the Women's Club, who, they do a fantastic job with a lot of the voluntary efforts that they do here in town. Also, I'm going to recognize that on September thirtieth in town of Enfield, we will be having Limp Girdle Muscular Dystrophy Day here in town. I will be presenting a proclamation to Heather Stewart later on this month, and that's something that we should recognize. It is a disease that affects a few people that are out there. You know, she operates with, you know, without the use of her limbs, and she's very self-sufficient, lives by herself, and I will be making a house visit to her in regard to that. Allied Community will have their fifteenth annual walk. Come on out and support Allied Sports and Recreation Program. It's going to be held on the Enfield Town Green. There's going to be a Walk-a-Thon. It's going to be a great day, and I know that some of you will be in attendance. This is something that's going to be brought back to our DPW committee, and we do have a concern about people using the high school track. We tried it as a pilot program, but we are going to be bringing it back to the committee because when school is in session and there's students in phys ed classes down there, the teachers and athletic director, administration is not comfortable with other people being out there, and it's a safety issue, so we will be bringing that up. I know that we're going to discuss the issue with Ms. Wilcox in regard to that. I think that's really what I have, so we'll go over to Counselor Pizner. Thank you, Ms. Pizner. Thank you.
Thank you. I too, I know Tammy left, but I too would like to thank her for coming. It takes a lot of courage. It's a parent's worst nightmare. George, thank you for being our budget guru. I appreciate it. I will read over what you give me. I always do. Michelle reached out to me, longtime friend, and I did take a look. I'm not proficient on that, so I did hand it over to Counselor Finger and Ludwig, and they both went over and spoke to her, so I was happy about that. I will answer you, Susan. The reason why I voted against it on Francis Avenue is I couldn't do it for an indefinite period of time. I just didn't feel right doing it for an indefinite period of time, and that's why I voted no.
Thank you.
Okay. I do have something else to say. Recently, there's just been a lot of chatter on social media about my questioning the BOE budget and the amount of cost sharing that we received, and I would like to explain for the last time why I questioned it. Late in April, Representative Hall and Senator Kissel held a town hall meeting for the residents, which I attended. At that meeting, Representative Hall handed out a flyer explaining the school and state budget. Reading through the information, I found that the Enfield's ECS funding would be twenty-nine million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand, and six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. I also noticed that there was an asterisk next to Enfield. This meant that Enfield was an alliance district, and as an alliance district, our ECS dollars would be held harmless, frozen, for the time that we are designated an alliance district, which is five years. During the next five years, or now we've been in it for two, the only way Enfield is going to get out of an alliance district is that we work with the State Department of Education to improve the education for our students. This is the only way we can be removed from an alliance district. When the proposed BOE budget was presented, I questioned the ECS dollars because they were much less. We were budgeting twenty-eight million, three-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, a difference of one point four, one million, four-hundred-and-forty-three thousand, and six-hundred-and-forty-five dollars. That is when I questioned and I asked the BOE budget to be reduced by one-point-four million, not because I'm anti-education, but because I felt the number was wrong. When I asked this both via email to the town manager and on the floor, I was told that the Enfield always budgets this way. So I let it go. On July thirteenth, when I was confirmed that the Enfield did receive the ECS dollars that I predicted, I requested from the town attorney a legal opinion, asking if we needed a resolution to correct the BOE budget, as well as our town manager to ask our finance director for the correct amount of dollars that Enfield did budget for the BOE. Her response was that the finance director was on vacation, and she sent me some numbers that I just didn't agree with. When the finance director came back, he sent me some numbers, and again, they just weren't sitting right with me, and I still couldn't understand why we didn't need a resolution to make the numbers right. So I did a little bit more research, and I found the same thing that happened last year in the BOE budget for the amount of one million, one-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, and seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine dollars. Adding these two years together comes to two million, six-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars, thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-four dollars, which is close to a mil. We all know that this year's budget resulted in a large mil increase. I believe that knowing that the income stream from the state, Enfield's mil increase, could have been significantly less. When I confirmed that both years the excess went into our fund balance, I asked for a sixty-month lookback by transaction or monthly balance, so I can understand our fund balance, and I've not received an answer to that. The town attorney has said that he would send my questions to the bond council, which I've never asked for. It's been said that I'm spending too much time on this. I disagree. As elected officials, we are the eyes, ears, and voice of our residents, and it is our job to ask tough questions and be able to understand and explain what is happening in Enfield. And where do we get that information? By asking our staff to help us. The budget is a big piece of our job, and I take it very seriously, especially if I feel that our tax dollars are not being spent correctly or our residents are being overtaxed. I don't see this as a waste of my time. I see it as what I was elected to do, and I will continue to ask questions. So now, through the mayor to the town manager, can you please tell me where the town share of the roof money for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one roof referendum can be found? Now that the school modernization referendum will not be here in November, how are we going to move forward maintaining our school roofs? I've looked through our budget book. I've asked questions. I can't seem to find the money that we put away for that. Thank you.
Counsel, Deputy Mayor Cicola.
All right, I'll go backwards. I can't believe we're still talking about one-point-four million dollars. This has been explained by the Board of Education, the town council, the town manager, the finance director, the State Department of Education, the legislatures. I'm sorry, but it's pretty clear. You calling into question the credentials of the professionals is not acceptable. I can't believe we're still talking about one-point-four million dollars. Mr. Young, three-point-five million dollars from ARPA was set aside for infrastructure. We did spend a lot of it on other public and other programs, but we did put away the three-point-five-ish because we knew we were going to have to make some pretty significant upgrades to the WPCA systems. Ms. Rodriguez, I wish she was still here, but I don't blame her for not being here. My heart breaks for her, and I thank her for having the courage to come up here. Ms. Wilcox, I know, I believe she left. I did not receive her first email, but I did respond to the other one, and I hope that we will be, I believe the town manager may have already spoken to her, but I assume that we will get an update on that. For Francis Avenue, I understand you guys are angry. I'm assuming you'll come up here and, every time, and personally attack me continually. You were allowed at the meeting that we took the vote on. Nobody said you couldn't come. It was public meeting. It was posted appropriately. You could have come, so saying that you weren't allowed there is simply not true. And because we did not continue the current resolution that we had, doesn't mean that it's not going to continue to be looked at. But I've said it before, and I'll say it again, we need six people to come to a consensus, and you have seen it here time and time again. There are eleven people up here, and we have ten or eleven different ideas on what should or shouldn't happen. So you can come up and yell. You can come up and point your finger at me and tell me I have no morals and I belong at a strip club or whatever you want. Strippers are wonderful people. That's fine.
That's not correct.
It's whatever you want to do, Mr. Bukowski, but it's not falling on deaf ears. But we need six people to agree, and that is not easy. You've seen the meetings. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Counselor Santanella, then Counselor Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to say first, I don't believe the accusations that Counselor Pizner is anti-education are fair, but I do have a hard time revisiting the issue of this one-point-four million dollars and attacking our staff and our finance director, who have been exemplary in the way they have managed the budgets for years, for taking a conservative approach to the way the budget was put together. And if the budget wasn't done the way that we did it and we did not receive those funds, we were going to have a bigger hole than we otherwise would have, and we ended up with a small surplus. Now, I know that we're getting attacked by a lot of people for the state of our, the tax increase this year. Mr. Bukowski, I got your email, and you referred to us as tax-and-spend Democrats, didn't you not? I read that. So I want to make a comment about that, so that people are clear what happened this year. We gave our teachers a three-point-eight million dollar increase in their contract. That is a huge part of the tax increase, which gave them the first step increase that they would have received in seven years. We raised police officer salaries by a million dollars, because when we looked at their compensation relative to everybody else sort of in our demographic group, they were among the lowest-paid police officers in that group. So there was another million dollars. There was one-point-eight million dollars that was added to keep town employees' salaries competitive, so people aren't continuously walking out the door to make twenty or thirty thousand dollars more at a neighboring community, because there weren't going to be people here to do the work that we want to beat them up for doing. So we gave them a salary increase. So we gave them a salary increase. Then there was an additional $800,000 that went to paying the interest on the debt, which when we came here was $103 million, and it's still $103 million. And so every taxpayer, I want you to know that almost 9% of what you sent us is going to pay the debt. It's not even going to pay for your trash pickup, your schools, your police, buildings and grounds, putting lights on the Christmas tree. It's going right out the door. And then we have a school that's in a school district that, for the first time in history, is an alliance district. We're in a financial mess. $103 million is $5,000 for every single household in town. That's what every household owes in debt. We've only added, we've only, we've done one referendum, it was $1.2 million for the public safety complex, and those bonds have not even been issued yet. So keep blaming us. We didn't, this is the stuff that we inherited. We weren't running the school into an alliance district. Who was in charge? I don't know how you run the town for 15 years and then blame people who've been here for 19 months for all the problems. It's ridiculous. And so if we're, if we have a 1.4 million dollars that sort of ends up left over, well, we can pay the debt, instead of fighting about whether or not we were, we should have had that 1.4 million dollars in the first place. And in all this conversation, we're not having a conversation about why we're in an alliance district and how we get ourselves out of it. It's nothing to be proud of. It's not the test scores. You know, you guys simplify it into some little soundbite that it's the test scores, and you blame the teachers, and it's not that simple.
He's got, he has the floor. He has the floor.
Fair point. Fair point. It's okay. It's all right. Counselor Finger, point well taken. There is a Blight Committee meeting. It's in two weeks. I will get you the date. I will post it. Anybody who would like to come and talk about Blight and see what the Blight Committee is doing to address some of the property maintenance issues in town, people are welcome to come. Counselor Pisner, you and I also have something else in common, that social media has certainly taken its toll in the past week. And I want to clarify something that has been put out there that is just not true. After the August 30th meeting, Dave Turner, David Turner, who many of you know who drive around town with a dump truck, upset about his assessment, went on the radio and made an accusation about my house and the assessment of my house and my garage in particular, claiming that my garage is actually another home, and I have an apartment that I rent out over it. I was absolutely outraged that people heard this on the radio, were texting me and telling me that this was being said, that I manipulated somehow the assessment of the house and the garage, which took place before I ever became elected. So I was angry and called Counselor Nelson to come and visit, which he was gracious enough to do. And I'm going to ask you, is there an apartment above my garage?
Well, it's more like a condo. I'm kidding. I'm breaking the tension.
Five-bedroom condo, right? That's right.
Right. There is no, there is no bathroom up there. It's more of a storage area.
And there never was. There is no plumbing, there is no, there is no living facility there. I don't have a problem when we don't agree. But if people are going to make it up and then put it on the radio, I'm not going to stand for that. I don't deserve that, and nobody else that sits up here deserves that crap from anybody. We're all volunteers here.
No, we're not.
Yes, we are.
We're elected officials. I cannot volunteer.
That...
Excuse me.
It's over the line, and it shouldn't happen to me, and it shouldn't happen to anybody else that's sitting here. And the last thing, the fundraiser at Jimmy's Pub was in very poor taste, and we should have done better. And for whatever reason, it got out, and it doesn't look very good. I'm sorry that came from us. It was not intended as a slap in the face, it was not my idea, but I'm part of this group, and we screwed up. We're sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry that that happened to you. And if, and so it's done, and it's over, and we apologize, I apologize on behalf of the group here. And I think that's all I have.
Can I respond to Counselor Santanella?
I was going to let Mr. Finger. Counselor Finger, you ready?
Well, I mean, Nick has him.
Counselor Hopkins, we'll go, we'll go right, we'll go, we'll go around.
Thank you. Firstly, I appreciate Ms. Wilcox coming out, and also for reaching out to me some weeks ago, letting me into her home, and also letting me borrow an umbrella to measure the water in her road. I know that town employees work really hard, and there's been a lot of response from the town on this issue. I have a question through the mayor to the town manager about what the process is when we have an issue with a contracting company. The resolution for her has not been swift. I know people are working on it, and I, it sounds like other counselors are interested in getting that as well, so I look forward to that. Secondly, I appreciate the concern, ongoing concern about the water pollution control system in town. I think the best way for the council, and I've said this many times, is to create a separate committee. It's a lot for volunteers to juggle. Some people really like getting the numbers, some people don't. Some people have day jobs, some people don't. Having a dedicated committee that looks at that would be great. In lieu of that, I would ask, again, through the mayor to the town manager, for an update in the near future on the health of the water pollution control system, specifically the debt on that, so we can all keep apprised in our dual roles as counselors and commissioners for WPC. As to Francis Avenue, I was really sad and shocked to see the fundraiser. I think the role of a counselor is to listen to residents, to make sure that their concerns are amplified, and also then to try to solve those concerns within the law and legal powers we have. We have the power as a council to regulate parking. A lot of people have little faith in Congress at the national level. I think something like this is a real, just a real wiffleball opportunity to enact a parking regulation in ways that are done in other parts of the town. We've been discussing this for almost 12 months at this point. We started with a question about one side of the street parking, polled the neighborhood. We've gone through all the steps. We tried the temporary regulation. That didn't work, partially because the business owner was paying the tickets of people, patrons that got them for parking illegally. People are not looking for a private street, just like folks in Powder Hollow don't have a private street. They have restrictions that match the problem, the very real documented problems that are occurring. I understand people are angry on Francis Avenue. I understand there is a huge amount of evidence. I hope other counselors do as well to act to fix this problem that should be a basic bread and butter town issue. I hope that the Public Safety Commission takes this up, but also, I'm frustrated at this point. We don't need to reinvent the wheel. This is not rocket science. We even had a very median compromise, maybe three meetings ago, proposed by Deputy Mayor Sikala, which I think is great. It is no parking after 10:00 PM until 6:00 AM on Francis Avenue enforced by towing, no parking on Highland Park, not enforced by towing. I think that's a great compromise. I don't think we need to spend another six months hammering this out. It's been done. The residents of both Highland Park and Francis Avenue have been polled. This is basic governance, and I really hope that the council considers this, because people are upset, and it's not just because of hurt feelings. They are seeing these issues crop up again. We're doing the same thing that happened some months ago all over again. This stuff will come back. So please, put your counselor hats on, solve this problem. Thank you.
Counselor Finger.
Thank you, Mayor. Start off by, again, to Mrs. Rodriguez, my condolences, and it's a tough thing to have to go through something like that. So let me get to my list, and unfortunately, it is a few things. Cheryl Drive, I guess, I was down there, especially today when it was raining out. It was flooding in front of her house and a couple other houses. The road's paved, it's that level. Maybe we can get Inglead on there to remove those orange sack bags, get them out of the basins, now they'll drain properly. And I know Counselor Luck was thinking about a curbing that was supposed to be there or not. I don't know if it is, maybe we should look into it, if it's part of that contract. If it is, it needs to be put there, but we should get them removed. The road's done. Same thing on Moody Road. The road's done. The lines aren't painted yet, but at least get, let's get the flowing. Those are self-cleaning basins, they're self-cleaning pipes. Water comes in, it rushes through, it's self-cleaning, lasts for years. That's why they make them that way. And that's something I know about, and I just want to make sure we can get that done for Cheryl Drive and Moody Road. Armstrong in Brook Road area, there was a gentleman that I spoke with this weekend, and there, he witnessed and watched the catch basin cleaning crew that we hire. They drove down the street in front of his house, the passenger got out, truck went down a brook, turned around, came back, and the guy had a can of white paint where they paint white spots to show that they cleaned it. They never cleaned them, allegedly. And they went all the way down the street that way. They did that one street in about 15 minutes of doing that painting of the spots, and just following the guy there, and then I guess he got in his car, or excuse me, his truck, his red truck, and he drove around, he watched him, and they did like the whole area like in two hours. I mean, it's impossible. It's impossible. So if you could please look into that with EPW about maybe having somebody go out there and just pop a couple, a few covers, and maybe send the truck out there, suck it up, and see if it is cleaned or not? That'd be nice, so I can get back to these residents, please. On Abbey Road where Collins put the water pipe going across throughout the water, their crops, it's sinking now, so can we please get them to cap that off, or get the town to cap that off? It's a, well, it's basically a speed bump, or whatever you want to call it, you know, but it's definitely sinking.
Speed bump goes on Abbey.
Yeah. Yeah, well, my part of Abbey, no. Because my, I sink. This is a good part of Abbey, not the ones that go in there. But it is sinking. You know, it's something he did, and it needs to be done.
Jar Mark or Collins?
What'd I say?
You said Collins.
Oh, no, it's Jar Mark. I'm sorry. Thank you, Counselor Nelson, I appreciate that. It is, thank you. My apologies. To Van Buren, Counselor Dustpart City, he's a representative of the area. I'm your neighbor, I'm right around the corner, I'm five, about five feet, excuse me, five minutes of walking to your house. Be more than happy to show up, especially if Mr. Counselor Dustpart shows up, we can work together on that. But I am your neighbor, I am quicker there, and I'll be more efficient. I love you, Matt. I love you, Matt. The seed that they were talking about on Cheryl Drive, that the contractor uses, it is called a contractor mix, and it's not the best mix. You know what I mean? It's, it is, it's going to grow crap grass, it's going to grow crap weeds, it's going to grow crap everything. Maybe that's something with this, these are very nice homes, very nice area, with some nice lawns. Maybe we can get them to change it over, get somebody to change it over to some real good grass seed, and for, you know, and start a fertilizer and make it right for these people on Cheryl, and especially that neighborhood. You know, the contractor mix is cheap, that's what they always, that's what they always put their budgets in. The other thing I have is 113 North Maple, which is obviously the Stanley property. If you look where they, where I went their way, where all the complaints came from, it's all overgrown. They put nice bushes up there, you know, on the hills that they made, and it looks good, but now it's, it's super tall. I don't know if they're responsible for making sure that stays nice and level. They mow by the road, but they don't take care of that whole area back there. It's definitely an issue. That can cause more ticks and things like that, things like that, to get into the people's lawn. The fence line on their side is terrible, so if we can get that looked at, too, please, I don't know if that's a Blight issue, Matt, I'm sure you saw it, but it is, it is bad. I feel sorry for the people, especially the ones without the trees in front, you know, in the backyard by the pole. It is way overgrown, so we have to get that looked at. Let's see, what else? The last thing I think I have here on my list is with Francis Avenue, my answer to Sam is Counselor Pisner. I could not see it going indefinitely, but I am also in agreement with Counselor Sikala and Counselor Hopkins about limited time of parking and the towing. I've thought about this. This is really getting to be an issue, and I really think that we really need to, you know, and I, that's the reason why I brought it for last time, but not for any other issues, is you people need to, need to not have to come here every meeting. You need to stay home, take care of your families, take care of your life, and have a life like anybody else in this town has, I have, and the rest of these people have. And why should you have to worry about what happens like that only because it is happening? We don't have to worry about that. I have no bar in front of my house, and, you know, something, I guess you have to live it, to experience it, and to make those decisions, that you want to do what you do. And it's a shame that you've been here for the last year to do that. As far as getting it done on the agenda, I would love to see it happen as soon as possible. Again, I think that we would probably have a good support here on that, you know, because I've seen Counselor Dustpart shake his head quite a few times about this, too. It needs to get resolved. I know he's offered his services, first check is his pay schedule, make sure he doesn't overcharge you for his services. But in any case, it needs to be done. I would, I would definitely support what Counselor Sikala and Counselor Hopkins has put forward. Thank you.
Counselor Ludwig.
I'm going to try to be brief. I wasn't going to comment on the 1.4 million, and again, I haven't heard Counselor Pisner attack staff. She's asked tough questions. Maybe I miscommunications, but it's a legitimate question, and I have, and I think there's two ways to resolve this. We used to bring the auditors in for a meeting, in a pre-meeting, to ask, so counselors could ask, you know, how our money's being spent. Maybe a suggestion is to bring the auditors in at a 6 o'clock meeting, that question can be asked, and let them, how they view, you know, how that's being, how we're handling it. And I think the other thing is, we need to go, let's look at the last 10 years of how we've handled ECS money. So let's go back 10 years. In my experience, again, my experience, we always listen, whether Republican or Democrat, whoever's the state rep, we took their best guess, and that's what we budgeted. And if we missed, we always made the board whole. So let's go take 10 years, let's, let's look at how often or how much we've missed, whether we've overbudgeted or we've underbudgeted, so we can kind of put this to bed, because I think it is a legitimate question. And so I think that's two ways we can do it. Then bring the auditors in and ask them, should we be making a resolution if we do get state money that we didn't basically budget for? How do we handle it properly? And should it be a resolution where we're moving the money into a certain fund, not just a general, not just the fund balance? I think it's a legitimate question, and I think that generally accepted accounting principles, I'm not an accountant, would follow that as well, but I'm pretty sure they would. So it's a legitimate question, and I think that's two ways we can solve it. All right? And then, and again, and I also, when you hear terms like debt, all right, what does that mean? Again, I've had this conversation, so when you look at our debt, and I'm going to say it's about maybe 99.9, maybe 100, is all taxpayer-approved projects. So it went to referendum... all taxpayer-approved projects. So it went to referendum, got approved by the taxpayers, 20 years of road referendums, you know, last 20, 25 years. You had JFK, you had N-FIL-HI. We're talking about the water pollution control, which was $40 million, where we got a 2% loan, as Mr. Young is correct. So again, it's taxpayer-approved projects to get infrastructure done. That's what our debt is. Okay? And when it comes to the roofs, we were actually doing it through the sinking fund. So we created a fund where we weren't adding to our debt. We're actually doing it through our CIP, where we would have to do a roof at a time. And yes, it was a little more expensive to do so, and also it took a little more time. But we also could apply for reimbursement, and now we have a revolving door of money where it's not going to our debt. But that has kind of gone through the wayside. So when you talk about debt, understand what it means. These are taxpayer-approved projects, mostly for the schools and the roads, pretty much, and the water pollution control plant. So all very important projects that needed to get done. And that's why we have, and again, we used to talk to our bonding agencies and ask how close we were to their, their recommendation of having too much debt. Because you do get dinged in your bond rating if you're actually not spending money on your infrastructure. So they actually ding you for it. So there's reasons why we had to spend money, and again, improve the infrastructure, because again, we wanted to maintain a bond rating where we got very favorable bonds. And again, by the way, we have, we were able two years ago to reissue those bonds and create another 1.2 million in savings, you know, in our, in our debt service. So again, there's ways you can manage it without just talking about, you know, what, you know, hey, debt. Well, again, it's getting work done, because we can't, we can't put that on our CIP. That's your operating budget. So understand when we hear these terms what they mean. Okay? And, and so again, I think it's, she has a legitimate right to ask the question. I have not heard her attack staff. She has. Again, I know Marie would be upfront about it. And, and so, again, Francis Ave, I made it actually, I'd see indefinite period. I agree, we should manage this problem. And maybe we haven't done a good job. And that's why I made an amendment. I think Counselor Hopkins seconded it, to do it every 90 or 100 days. I understand, it's, the answers, I haven't been what you would want, but I'm gonna be upfront. I am not a fan of having full residential-only parking, but I'm willing to compromise. And that's why I wanted to do, again, review it every 90 to 100 days where we can see if, if there's, again, solutions sometimes present themselves. So I wasn't in favor of the indefinite. And I said that on record, and it's, if you want to tech the tape, it's there. But I agree. I think there is a solution if we're willing to work to it. You know, and, and sort of now transitioning a little bit to suicide prevention, you know, I think one of the things, it's, you know, depending on what your point of view is, there's a key word when it comes to helping people, and it's called time. You know, what most people don't understand, and I understand, and again, I'm not gonna talk of words about stigma or anything. Look, everyone is in pain sometimes. Some people are on what they call unbearable pain. And if you can recognize that, which is not easy, and just remember time. Try to, the time is trying to get that person out of that unbearable pain. And that's the hardest thing to understand. And that's something maybe as a community, we can really start looking at. How can we, again, like, again, when it comes to like, we're hoping to have a presentation in October on human trafficking. Again, maybe there's things we can do as a community where we recognize some of this stuff. And we, we help one person, we've done our job. So I think there's things that, you know, that are out there that really, other than just being aware, there's actually some tools we all can use to help someone in need. And I'm more than willing to have those conversations here, six to seven meetings, and having these kind of tough, honest conversations with the community. Constitution Week, again, I'd like to see it a whole, we gotta remember, it's the whole, your whole life. I mean, we just went through where, again, a lot of your, your freedoms were taken away from you. And, you know, again, Constitution Week should be Constitution 365 days out of the year. How important your rights are. How important it is to be innocent until proven guilty. Things that now it seems we're taking for granted. We need to remember that. It's gotta be talked about all the time. We need to teach it in our schools. And quite frankly, as a council, maybe we should start looking at ways where we can actually have little things we can hand out every meeting on, on the Constitution. To remind people how important it is, these are God-given rights. The government doesn't give you your rights. We're supposed to protect your rights. We gotta remember that. And so I'm almost done. Mr. Young, good question when he brought up about Holly Lane, which again, is on a road referendum. I know we had this back and forth on Abbey Road. Can you, I don't, again, I usually remember everything on every referendum. I don't remember the two pump stations he mentions as part of that $40 million referendum. He might be right.
16.
36, was it 36? I'm sorry.
6 million.
Yeah, you, I know you know the numbers better than I. Could we check that to make sure? Because if he's right, and I have to admit, I don't remember, I remember what we were doing with the upgrades. I just don't remember if we actually included pump stations within that.
16 pump stations.
Yeah, so it's fair, if we could do that research for him. And, and so last thing, and on Sherrill Drive went over there. Again, that contractor, in my experience, always, is always very responsive to the residents of whatever street they were doing, in my experience. However, I gotta say this. Again, I'm sorry, there's, on one Sherrill, there was some of his, his, whatever you call it, brick facade was knocked down on the edge of his driveway. I don't know if it's been fixed. Clearly, there's an indent in her property on 5 Sherrill. You can see it from where the tractor was. And they just, it looks like, again, it looks like they just threw the, the straw, and it, it looks terrible. I'm just being honest. And the weeds are all over. Look, I know Counselor Finger knows this better than I, but these are taxpayer-funded projects that they approved. We got, I mean, there was a line where there was no grass at all between, she has a very nice lawn, and there's a pretty thick, you know, and it's not just her, there's others. And could we, usually the contractor's very responsive, this one in particular, to the residents. So maybe we can, again, because there are other, getting other contracts for us, so let's remind them that, you know, these, you know, that they should be responsive to the residents. Can we check on the curbs? And again, I'll say this, I'm not an expert, I'm an engineer, but the way it's done, you, if you stand where her, and you look up the road, man, there is a gash between the road and the property. If you don't think water's gonna be running down now, once, and I saw it today when I drove by coming here. It looks like we built in a nice little flow of water, gonna ruin these people's lawn. And so we need to clarify with the curb on whether that was part of it or not. And if, until this is resolved, I understand we have a constant, usually a construction bond, which, can I, a request to the mayor, to the manager, that we do not release the construction bond on this project until we find out all these answers. Because especially since we're awarding the, again, a contractor, in my experience, has done a great job all over town. And so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna jump that they're doing a bad job or anything. I'm just saying, in my opinion, I've seen better work. And like I said, the grass itself, there's weeds are all over the place. I mean, it really is. I have to admit, it's, they, I think they have legitimate beef, in my opinion. So if we could just make sure we do not allow that, the construction bond to be released until we find out, again, there's some communication between the residents and the, and the, and again, I know the town sort of facilitates it, but it's facilitating maybe get our contractor, again, in my experience, has been always very responsive. And I didn't want to comment on everything, but I guess I kind of had to. But, and I think that's it. I think, I think, I don't think I have any more. Just to clarify one last thing. Are we on schedule for October for the human trafficking presentation?
Yes.
I mean, if you could just, I mean, that's, that's a huge thing. Again, I want to say this, I appreciate you doing that, because we have to be a community where it's not gonna happen here. And I appreciate you staying on top of that, because I know, you know, again, you've, we've had this conversation for about a year. So if it happens, again, I want to acknowledge the fact that you stayed on it, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Counselor Pizner.
So I just wanted to answer Counselor Santinella. I am sorry that they did that to you on the radio. But if you look at my social media page, I do not call people out. I say it to their face. In the letter that went out, that named me that I was wasting time, I found that, I'm sorry, I'm a counselor. The only way I am going to learn how to be a better counselor for the residents is to ask questions. I have never attacked staff. I've asked questions. They are here for me to ask questions to. So if other counselors feel that I'm wasting time, I look at, this is what I was elected to do. And I honestly wasn't gonna say another word about the 1.4 until the letter came out.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Okay. Getting long here. I just had a couple points. I wanted to address Michelle Wilcox's concerns. I don't recall receiving an email from her, so I'm gonna go through my emails and see if I can see and understand more what she's talking about. And I'm hoping we can get some answers for her. The Francis Ave residents, it's unfortunate that you're still dealing with all these disturbances. And I am definitely interested in relooking at the parking situation. And I've driven down your street a couple times, hoping to catch you outside and just kind of get a better feel for it. But I haven't done it at 1:00 in the morning. Maybe that's when I need to go. So, but I'm definitely interested in relooking at that. I wanted to thank the Weymouth Road Firehouse. They always have a moving tribute to the 9/11, and that was this week. They have a beautiful memorial service every year. And I also want to thank Riley School of Dance. They present a beautiful memorial wreath in the tribute garden there, and their students always walk to the firehouse from Raffia Road. And so I really want to thank them for their dedication to this service to our town. I also wanted to thank Tammy Rodriguez for bringing to light this important issue of suicide. I mean, it's always so challenging to discuss these issues. But her sharing and being open about her tragedy, if it helps one person, then it's definitely worth it, and her bravery is to be commended. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Despard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just, I need to say, I need to weigh in on the 1.4 million again, because to me, that's, if it's not an attack, it's at very least an uncomplimentary commentary. Because when you didn't have the same questions last year, last budget, when he budgeted the same exact way, the only difference is this year, you voted to cut education. That's the difference this year, and that's why the questions are being asked now. So at least just own that. Like, it's, it's, let's not put it on our finance director. Let's just own that the difference between you and me in this and was that, I was willing to pay the 1.4 million to make sure our education was funded. And then I also just wanted to say is, wow, I didn't go to the meeting you went to with our state delegation, but did you ask Representative Hall how much funding she fought for? Because in a year where I'm seeing monumental state funding to other municipalities, N-FIL got zero. So I just didn't know if that was also part of the questions.
That's not true either.
I'm going back.
Come on.
Okay, so first of all.
Well, go on.
Enough with the anti-education.
Hold on.
Enough that I'm gonna cut a budget. The figure was wrong. And the reason I didn't bring it out last year, quite honestly, was because I was a new counselor, and I didn't ask the question, because I didn't do the research. So there's where you and I differ. Let's leave it alone.
I'm not gonna leave it alone. So, so you're saying that, that our finance director budgeted wrong? That's what you're saying?
I'm saying we did not use the correct.
You didn't catch it last year.
Numbers. We knew what the numbers were because we are in alliance. I think we could have come in a little closer.
If that's not an attack, I don't know what an attack is.
Okay, at this point, we're gonna be ending Counselor Communications, and we're gonna move onward to the Town Manager Report. If we can, like, you know, stay focused, then let's finish off the meeting now. That would be awesome.
So the one thing that I'd like to ask for council indulgence is to go back to the public hearing that was earlier tonight on our open space assessment ordinance and the revisions that have been proposed. In front of you, you received tonight collaborative work with many people having input, taking the input from the council as to how you wanted clarity in terms of maximizing a resident's opportunity to, for example, if they had a house, a pool, a garage, they would be able to put the back acreage of said parcel, if they met this criteria, into open space. From a, you know, a taxpayer standpoint, that was very attractive. So we've gone through it, and the Conservation Commission, as you heard, have signed off on it. So to Counselor Despard's point, if you were ready to make a motion, I would just like to clarify on the record that everything in yellow that you see before you is new language that we added or clarified. But I would like you to also, in that motion, take into consideration what Karen LaPlante said in her testimony and that we agree with, that the item that is 4B should have been under 3. So if we could just make that technical revision, that 4B becomes 3B, and that is the one about how we determine total acreage, it fits better under criteria. Other than that, it is ready to go. I would like to just make, you know, one clarification, so that we're all on the same page going into this, that we are working collaboratively, and I think that that's a key point. The Conservation Commission is gonna play a gatekeeper role from a policy perspective, talking to people before they go to the assessor. However, 12-107E is clear that the assessor is the final authority on open space classification. So all of us who are involved in these processes should probably take some time and educate ourselves and look at the book, which has been very helpful for all of us. And I can get all of you copies, or anybody from the audience who might need one. It is the Public Act 490 book that we use exclusively in order to determine how all of this language is developed. So with that one clarification of 4B becoming 3B, I would ask your indulgence that we do this tonight so that we can move forward as applications come in and as people hopefully attend the Conservation Commission workshop on October 10th.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion, sorry, is that okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it is, at this point. Let's, let's move forward with it.
Thank you. So I make a motion to adopt the revisions proposed tonight to the PA 490 Open Space Ordinance, as shown in yellow, as well as moving Section B to Section 3, labeled as subsection 4, as recommended by the town attorney.
Excuse me.
Hold on.
We have to bring it on the table.
I had to add it to the agenda first before we discuss the order.
Okay, okay. So I'd make a motion to bring this to the agenda.
Okay, the motion was made and seconded by Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Real quick question, one more, because I want to make sure, again, because we have this discussion, two-thirds vote, need to make, so I want to close a loop. You corrected me?
That is correct.
You corrected me.
The motion to add the item to the agenda should, needs to pass by a two-thirds vote, which for us, we have a full council, it's eight votes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That is, okay, so we will now vote on that. All in favor? Unanimous? Yes.
Okay.
Now you can make, yes.
So now that we're, it's on the table, I'd make a motion to adopt the revisions proposed tonight to the PA 490 Open Space Ordinance, as shown in yellow, as well as moving Section 4B to Section 3, labeled as subsection 4, as recommended by the town attorney.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Mangini. Discussion. Counselor Nelson.
Yes. I'm just a little concerned, and I, I guess, is it appropriate that I have a conversation with the Conservation Commission on this also, since they were part of this?
You can invite them up if you.
And let me explain my concern. My concern is number six. The water company property, no property for which the assessment is determined pursuant to the terms of Connecticut General Statute 12-75. So they haven't, they have been exempt up to this assessor. This assessor's challenging it now. So all. No. Correct me, please.
So the state law that gives us the authority to enact a Public Act 490 Open Space Classification actually has clarifying language that we, as a municipality, can exempt water companies because they are taxpaying entities from not participating in 490, which is the language that we've adopted. The water company, Connecticut Water Company in Hazardville, are now challenging that, and they would like to be able to put their excess acreage into this, for which they would receive a significant tax break.
So they're not getting the tax break now?
Not according to the ordinance that you have in front of you.
Okay, because me and Councilman Ludwig were discussing this. So my question would be then, if we give them this, are they reducing their bills to all our residents?
No.
Okay, so they're not. So who would get the benefit of us cutting tax to them because we gotta make it up somewhere?
Right.
So we're gonna be taxing the residents to pick up the slack on this?
The benefit of doing this, which was discussed when we were putting this together, is the fact that it would then count toward our percentage of, what's the term, Karen? The protected open space, right? Protected open space. So right now, it is open space. It's out there. We can't use it. We can't access it. It is, it is water company property. If they entered PA 490 Open Space Classification, they would be able to use the formula of how we value that acreage, take the tax break, and pay less.
Right, but I, I don't think the water company has ever developed any of their land they have wells on, so it's gonna remain open space. And I think the tax, the residents have seen such a substantial tax increase in the last in the last two years. This is only going to add more to it if we give, if we remove this. And, right, so, so I'm not okay with removing this. I'm sorry, Karen, but this has got to stay.
Well, let's hold on one second. When Karen came up, I know that you stated in your explanation that you were good with this, and you were good with moving, as we stated, moving up 4B up to 3B, and I think that you did say, strike 6. Okay, so I just want to make this perfectly clear that, and I guess I have somewhat of an issue, you know, it's, you know, the last-minute emails that we received today, you know, stating this. No, we, I, I received one. It was late afternoon. Town manager received one also. All right, and I don't know if Karen, if you received the, from both the water companies. So I guess I do have somewhat of an issue with number 6. However, is this something that we could also come back to at another time?
Yes.
Then we could possibly come back to it at another time and discuss that? So that, that's also an issue. Councillor Ludwig?
Yeah, I, I was my suggestion, we come back to the, and also, so, so I'm looking at as a utility, public utility. Eversource has a ton of land on the, on the river. I mean, there's, there's opportunity here where I'm, I want the open space, but also there's got to be a broader discussion on how we can help have access to certain things. I know we started with Eversource a few years ago on having access to the river. But, and if they're going to get a tax break, and it's not going to be passed on back to the, to the taxpayer, well, then that's, I think that's the discussion we need to have a conversation with water. Yeah, I mean, we should invite them and talk to them. Hey, what's your plan? I mean, I want to keep the open space. I really don't want, but I also don't want to be giving them a huge tax break, and then your water bill goes up X amount of dollars. I mean, there's got to be a balance here. Sorry, it's got to be a balance. And I, I, all the other recommendations, I think, are good, and I appreciate you working with Karen and the Conservation Commission on them. But I think, I just want to be, I want to publicly state, and I understand your point on, you know, that the assessor has the final say. The spirit of this ordinance is to, again, promote open space, not state technicalities where conservation decides, hey, look, this would be a great project to do it, and then we have some interpretation of state statute that says no. I want to publicly say, my, 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 my spirit or my point of this is that we're protecting open space, and every time maybe someone tries to, to file the application and go through that process, and they go through conservation, and conservation makes their recommendation, and we're having this, again, back and forth, we really haven't solved anything. I want to publicly say, my spirit is, I want to, I want open space. And if people are willing to qualify for it, and the Conservation Commission signs off on it, then I'm, I want to avoid that, well, the state statute still says, well, that's great, but you're not getting it. And then I don't want to, so if I want to be on public record what my spirit of the ordinance is, I'm willing to bring back the water, the, all the utilities, including the water companies, to relook at number 6. But I agree, I, we didn't get the, I didn't get the communication. I don't, I don't feel it's, I can pull it out of the recommendation. I'm actually seeing, yeah, what the correspondence was.
So I agree. I think that the, the ordinance can be revisited on the water department issue specifically, once you have more information and we're able to do a tax loss revenue calculation for you. But the bigger issue I see right now is making sure that we have something in place that residents can understand that the Conservation Commission can work with interested residents who want to take advantage of this before the deadline. The assessor is looking into whether we can legally extend the deadline past October 31st. We may not be able to do so. So time is of the essence to ensure that anyone who has the inkling of wanting to take advantage of this has the opportunity to do so. The water issue can come secondary to that. There's really two issues right here now. The expediency of letting residents apply and get that open space classification, and then the position of the water departments.
Well, yeah, I, yeah, I totally agree with that in terms of, you know, with, with the amendments that are stated in yellow, I think we're, we would be good with that. We can revisit utilities at a later date, if we choose, choose so. But I think we should move forward. Councillor Hopkins, you had your hand up.
Thank you. Quick question through the mayor to the town attorney, or the town manager perhaps, if she knows. If someone's denied this designation, if we pass this statute, and they apply using this application, is that appealable to the BAA or to the Superior Court, or both in succession? How does that work?
That's a good question. I think appeals would lie to either. That's my gut reaction, without looking at the statute, but that's my understanding.
I'm curious, I mean, I'll be frank. I have no confidence in the town assessor to handle this properly, based on prior, prior handling of 490 stuff. I hope that's not the case. I do agree with the concern about water companies. The purpose of this statute, my understanding, is to incentivize open space being used, and I don't think this, this would do that for the water companies. They are not going to change the land. The land is currently open. They're not going to, to, you know, buy more land and keep it open. I don't really see a benefit. There's a large tax revenue loss that we could have if we did that. So it sounds like maybe people aren't going that way, but that's my concern with it. To councillor Ludwig's point, it would be interesting to see us contract with public utilities, but I think maybe there are some limits with our ability, you know, using 490 to, to, you know, say, we'll give you the 490 if you allow us access or if you agree to distribute the proceeds you're getting from not having to pay taxes to residents. I'm a little hinky on that. I'm not so sure that can be done, but that's where I'm at on this. I think ultimately, this really should be done. We need an open space ordinance. I agree to keep number, keep Section 6 for the reasons I explained.
Okay. Sheila, roll call.
Councillor Nelson.
Four.
Councillor Pisner.
Four.
Councillor Santinella.
Four.
Councillor Angier.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sicola.
Four.
Mayor Crisari.
Four.
Councillor Despard.
Four.
Councillor Finger.
Four.
Councillor Hopkins.
Four.
Councillor Ludwig.
Four.
And councillor Mangini.
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Thank you. In keeping with the open space theme tonight, I do want to bring to the council's attention that we have had a request to possibly acquire open space in the area of Bailey Road, which is adjacent to the Scantic. So I'd like to refer this to the General Government and Finance Committee for their agenda so that we can discuss this and bring it back to you, obviously in keeping with what we've just done previously, but also, we do have funds that are set aside for open space, and this seems to be a very reasonable financial transaction potential for the town council. Somebody could make that motion on behalf of.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand, please. A hand vote unanimous. Eleven, zero.
Okay. To answer some of the questions that were posed tonight during the earlier part of the meeting and from the town council, I'm going to go as quick as I can. To Mr. Young, Mr. Wilcox is working on your answers. It was a really hard question, four or five pages that you asked, and we are working through that. We are currently without a deputy finance director, so it's been a little busy. We will have those answers, as well as give him the supplemental report that you gave tonight, so that we'll have that for the next meeting. I do believe we are scheduled for a WPCA meeting of the council. I'll look to see which meeting in October that's supposed to happen at. We talked about property maintenance, and there were no towing. There were no problems at Powder Hollow in terms of neighbor issues. So knock on wood that that continues. The Armstrong situation with the town's vendor councillor, Finger, what date was that? Because I'm going to try to, the Armstrong issue with the vendor, what date approximate?
It was springtime. I don't have the exact day, but it was done in the springtime.
Like several months ago, springtime?
I would say, yeah. Probably after they first started, maybe.
Okay.
I mean, I could probably get the exact date, but I don't know it all right now.
Okay, no, we'll, I will speak with the Public Works Director. My only comment to you back is, I'm not sure how much we're going to be able to do with all the rain that we've had over the summer.
Right, but it's not the rain, it's on the slope, that's an abominal thing.
Right, but a lot of times you can tell when a grate has been cleaned, they'll lift it out and they'll take the detrius about it.
I know I've done that job many a time.
But I'm just not sure if we're going to see anything.
And I received a text too, from a, from a play role, to see if they watch the same thing.
Play, okay. All right, we are on that.
I just went up and watched, painted the deck.
The, the sinking on Abbey, we will refer, and I will refer the grass on the slope to the Winston Lee manager. In terms of the larger issues, I do want to share with the council the issue of Cheryl Drive. Also, just informationally, we have a lot of information that is on the website, and there's an entire section under the Current Roads 2021 Construction Project List. So I pulled it up earlier tonight, and there was a notice that went out to the residents of Cheryl Drive, Edmund Lane, and Stephen Drive. On behalf of the town of Enfield, Hinckley Construction has been contracted to reconstruct your street. On or about Monday, April 24th, the contractor will start the road improvements. It goes on to say what the work is going to include. This letter says, road reclamation and reconstruction, repaving of the roadway surface with hot mix asphalt overlays, installing new drywells, replacing catch basins, replacing catch basin tops, installing new drainage pipes, resetting existing utility structures, installing pavement markings, installing new signs, driveway apron reconstruction, and other incidental work. So in essence, the curbs were never part of it. But in dealing with our staff, who have been on Cheryl Drive frequently in the last couple of weeks, to deal with Mrs. Wilcox's issues and troubleshoot some other concerns, we do believe that this whole project got off kilter, and she did mention how long it was. If you go back to the roads webpage, you will then see that on May 25th, we issued another notice. And it referenced the previous notice, but it also said that last November of 2021, all public utilities, including Connecticut Water, were notified of the approved roads slated for reconstruction. At that time, we asked the utilities to consider updating their infrastructure on or below the approved roads. Connecticut Water determined that their infrastructure was adequate and elected not to make repairs or replacements. Due to the recent water main break on Cheryl Drive, Connecticut Water has reevaluated the condition of their system and now plan on replacing the water mains before the town's contractor paves the roads. Connecticut Water has notified us that the utility work will take approximately eight to 10 weeks to complete. After Connecticut Water's work has been completed, the town contractor will then return to finish paving the roads. So right there, Mrs. Wilcox is completely correct. This never should have taken as long as it did, but because of that complication with Connecticut Water, it stretched into a 17-week process. I would also like to note that the Hinckley Construction Company, which does a lot of work in town, is a local company. They're not going anywhere. I feel very strongly, as I've told Ms. Wilcox, she will be made whole. There is a one-year warranty on everything that happens there. This project is still open. This is an open, active construction project. It is dated through November 15th. So we're still actively working in that area. It was seeded, there was topsoil added, there's been a lot of rain. It's not pretty right now. We will go back, and there will be additional instructions to homeowners about how to care for this newly planted grass. With this type of seed mix, you have to cut it frequently, and you have to water it frequently, and that's something that we have to communicate to them. The new catch basins and the new drywells are still being installed on Edmund, so again, my point being, they're still in the neighborhood. There's still a lot of active work. But this was not a project that was slated to have curbs. That neighborhood has not had curbs ever. And we do believe that somebody from one of the water company contractors mentioned, you should have a curb here, look at the slope. Unfortunately, that was not part of the scope. And then in terms of the silt, the filter sacks that go into the catch basins, this is because of the current state of the neighborhood. So when you do a construction project of this type, you put in the sacks. They do allow drainage to run in, maybe not at the same rate that we're all accustomed to, but it prevents all of the soil and the runoff and any kind of erosion from the newly planted areas from getting into the catch basins. Those are required by the DEEP. We cannot remove them until the end of the contract period, which is November 15th. They're part of the site conditions. So they will remain. We will continue to monitor them. I do believe that the Public Works crews have gone out, and they've cleared them once of all this stuff that comes through them. This is also a great reminder for the community at large. Regardless of whether you have filter sacks or not, keeping your catch basins clear is critical, especially during, when we expect icing conditions. Things can build up, and then it obviously sends the water elsewhere. So that's the update on Cheryl. And the last thing I was going to just update everybody on, oh, was Ms. Ms. Wilcox, oh, councillor Pisner's questions about the education money. First, to answer your question directly, you would not find in the budget book the information that you're looking for, because it's part of a bonded financial transaction. It would be in the financial statements, and we can get you that and show you where it's tracked within there. To be clear, I understand the level of consternation that this alliance education financing has caused. We talk about it frequently at the staff level because it does seem that no matter how we try to answer it, there doesn't seem to be an acceptance of what it is. So the finance director created a summary that I've been reviewing, but we weren't ready to send it out yet because there's still some things I'd like to use as citations. But I do think that I'm going to take a minute tonight just to hit some of the highlights. What we've created is a chain of events for budgeting for an alliance district for both last year and next year, and I promise I'll be brief. In March of 2022, we found out that Enfield was going to be named an alliance district. So obviously, that meant that the finance director started to investigate what the interplay is between alliance district and the other big piece of what governs what you do, which is the minimum budget requirement of how we fund boards of education. So he went through all of those alliances and looked at how the ECS is funded and how it's calculated in a normal way. However, at that point, again, this is a year and a half ago, for fiscal year 2023, councillor Pisner, your first budget year, only the 202012 amount is given to the town. So the ECS funding is calculated that way. So the difference between 2023 and the 2012 amount, that difference is the alliance money that would have been given directly to the Board of Ed. Our minimum budget requirement states that even though we're now an alliance district, and the towns will receive less ECS funding, we still cannot reduce our appropriation to the Board of Education, the minimum budget. So there's those two key pieces of interplay that I think the way Mr. Wilcox is starting this chain of events summary is going to be very helpful to all of you. So in April 2022, we confirmed understanding that the alliance district laws with the state of Connecticut Department of Education, there's emails in here from the State Department of Education. We also found out that there were some changes to the alliance district statutes being considered, which would delay naming new alliance districts for a year. So if you recall, there were 30, then there were 33 because three, three towns balked at leaving and leaving that money on the table. So we were added on paper only. There was no funding that came through the alliance district to the town of Enfield. So as a result, we were uncertain of the amount we would receive, and we had a couple of options to budget for this uncertainty. The first is, we could budget a lower amount and use less fund balance than we had planned if we received a larger amount, or we could budget a higher amount and either use more fund balance than we planned or scramble to cut expenses after the budget had been adopted if we ended up receiving less. He recommended the lower amount due to the impact. We passed our budget in mid-May. The state legislature passed theirs in June, and it was signed at the end of June. So that included changes to the alliance district law, but not on the matter that they had told us it was going to be. They told us that we were going to receive the fiscal year 22 amount rather than the fiscal 12 amount. Since the fiscal 22 allocation and the 23 allocation were the same, that meant that we received the same ECS funding, zero increase. So now we move to this year. We were told the same thing. They're making changes. You're going to get money, and they're going to do it so that you receive the fiscal year 12 ECS amount for this coming budget year that we're in right now. As a result, we decided to budget the town to receive the lower amount in fiscal year 24. But during the budget deliberations, the alliance district statute, which we had been reviewing, now is updated, and they made changes again. Again, there's emails in here with us asking what's going on. So once again, we were unsure of the amount we would receive[1758.61] So once again, we were unsure of the amount we would receive and recommended that the lower amount for the same reason as in 2023. So what the packet that we're eventually going to give to you is, is showing you House Bill 5506, the wording that we used, the minimum budget requirement issues, and then this substitute Senate Bill Number One, which was approved on June 28th of 2023, far past the point that we had done our budget. There's also emails in here from the Department of Education. The fact remains is that it doesn't matter if a state rep or a state senator or CCM or the State Department of Education tells us, "Here's what we think your budget run is going to be." It inevitably changes. There's just no guarantee until the state actually adopts their budget, sifts through all of the statutory change, and we get the final education amount. So we'll continue and, you know, give you as much information as you want. I don't feel that any of us have been attacked, but we have been trying to explain. So we need your help in helping you explain what this is. The Town of Enfield has never received a note or a citation in any of their audits or financial statements from the people who review it. Everything is in order. There is no concern on my part in reviewing everything that we do and having the auditors come in, which I think is a great idea, and have them tell you themselves. We are doing everything the right way, by the book. This is confusing. The interplay between Alliance District funding that actually never came to pass and the fact that ECS is the way it is, and the fact that we have minimum budget requirements per state law made for quite the cauldron of education brew, so to speak. So we will continue to endeavor to give you as much information as you can and to try to answer the questions to the best of our ability. The issue becomes is how this information is received and how we move forward, because unfortunately, this is just going to repeat itself next year as well, unless there's additional statutory changes. And I think that's it for my report.
Good.
However...
No.
Both Attorney Talberg and the Assistant Town Manager have brief reports that they want to make.
Go ahead.
All right. If I have the floor, I'll be brief. Just a quick announcement about my immediate predecessor as Town Attorney, Maria Elston. You may recall, when I was appointed your Town Attorney almost four years ago, part of the deal was, I would accept the appointment if she agreed to stay part-time to handle the town's land use matters. Originally, she was going to do that for six months. And then six months came, and we talked her into another six months and another six months. Well, we've hit the end of the road. I'm sorry to announce that she has informed me, and I've accepted the fact that she will be leaving town service for good September 30. So her last day will be next Friday, September 29. We are happy for her that she will enjoy a well-deserved retirement for good, but we are scrambling to find assistance to handle the half dozen or so land use matters that she currently has for the Planning and Zoning Commission, the ZBA, and the Wetlands Commission. So I will work with our Town Attorney staff. We've been triaging, trying to figure out next steps with the Town Manager. But I just wanted to say publicly to thank you, Attorney Elston, for all of her long years of dedicated service. She is an expert in land use litigation. She's been relied upon by our volunteers on those land use commissions for literally decades, and she is going to be sorely missed. So please, next Friday is her last day. If you have an opportunity, wish her well in her retirement, and that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And first, Councilor Despard, as an Air Force veteran, thank you for recognizing US Air Force today. So my boss tasked me with the Enfield Summer Concert Series wrap-up, and that's what I'm here to discuss. All too frequently, the Town Council hears about negative issues going on town, so please indulge me for a moment while I share some positive news. By many indications, the Enfield Summer Concert Series was a resounding success. And let me give you some background. In early spring, the Town Manager and I were tasked with procuring and producing up to 10 different bands to play at the soon-to-be freshly minted new band show. We were mindful that the Town Council just purchased this Ferrari band show, so we couldn't just equip it with an AM radio. And just, and between the Town Manager and I, we had zero years of experience in producing a summer concert series. So using our social media resources, Ellen soon found Joe Nuttall, an Enfield resident, armed with a vast network of musicians and personal experience, to volunteer his time, ensuring us that the Enfields inaugural summer concert series would be a success. They came up with some guidelines. Let's use local, homegrown, Enfield talent. They got musicians like Mike Gill from Beyond Purple, Dan Gill from Murphy's Law, Sage King from the Sage King Band, Ray Wheaton from King Cool, probably a lot more musicians I'm not even aware of locally that played in these bands. They wanted some diversity, so we had out the box. They did some Motown, Temptations, things like that. And then they wanted to start and finish the series with a local, proven, successful band. So we started off with Johnny Six Gun, and we ended at the tail end with Trailer Trash. We had over 1,200 attendees. Next, through the RFP process, we found a local guy named Josh Friend in his sound company called Sophio Sound Systems that provided a very competitive price for our lofty needs. In addition, when we learned that the band show would not be finished on time, he also provided temporary staging for us, because, as you know, the show must go on. Results were something for everyone. From June 13th to August 29th, 10 different concerts played at Higgins Park. This number excludes the Fourth of July celebration. We had over 3,580 people attend these concerts. We had six different food vendors, from Brazilian street food, pizza, comfort food like hamburgers, cheeseburgers, mac and cheese, Chick-fil-A, ice cream, donuts. Eyewitness kids playing all over the new playski or riding sidewalk chalk on the sidewalk. Teenagers dribbling basketballs up and down the new basketball court. Seniors, children, or even residents stopping by after a hard day's work, got to sit down on the lawn and listen to music, dancing in a friendly crowd or socializing with their neighbors. The Enfield Summer Concert Series epitomized exactly what a positive community should be. And one thing I noticed, and also the B&amp;G crew noticed, and then even the musicians noticed, that after every single concert, there was not one piece of litter left behind in the lawn. That showed respect. They respected what you, as the Town Council, did for them, and that's their way of thanking you. Enfield can have nice things, and this is the way they show their respect. So we did have some takeaways that we're working on. Diesel fumes from the generator, that's a temporary thing. Hopefully, when we get funding and we get the electrical out to the band show, that issue is resolved. The porta-potties, they were not up to our standards. But now that we have just purchased 810 Enfield Street next door, and we have already allocated funding for the nice outdoor restrooms, we can start planning and working on those outdoor restrooms. We did have to open up Town Hall, though, for one of the concerts, because the porta-potties were just disgusting.
Too many people.
And there was too many people, yes. And a shout out to, well, let me do the thank yous later. Also, one band or a couple bands, sometimes they use inappropriate language when we have kids around, and I have to do a better job in impressing upon them to read the room, so to speak, because these are family events, and they should be maintained that way. So thank yous first. Thanks to the Town Councilors that voted for the band show. I'm told by musicians that played in other towns that Enfield Band Show is the place to be, and other towns have taken notice what you have done. Thanks to the Enfield Cultural Arts Commission for helping to provide the funding and information booth, introductions to each concert, and even providing the chalk to the kids to play. Special thanks to Enfield resident Joe Nuttall for volunteering his time and rolodex of musicians. Thanks to Josh Friend and Sophio Sound Systems for providing the sound. And thanks to all our employees like Cheryl Eckenroth and the Town Manager's office for contacting the vendors, ensuring payments made to the band. Community police officers like Josh Markey, Allison Mount, Brett Whitcomb, Mike Lynch for policing the area. It was a very calm crowd, no fights, no nothing. We had one EMS issue, but it was resolved. And I know Facilities Manager Mark Carr needs to be recognized, but special thanks to the B&amp;G crew leader, Trevor Tony, and many of his crew members, setting up tents, lighting, parking cars, anything we asked to do them. They rose to the occasion, and they did it, because they wanted to see an outcome with their town, too. So I'm happy to report a successful first year, and next year, I'm looking forward already to the new series of concerts, and even try to get sponsors to help offset the funding. And I think it'll be, and if you haven't come, I please encourage you to come. I seem to think a lot of councils are already, but you know what it's like, and it's a real well-done, and congratulations to all of you for having a part in this.
Okay, thank you, Steve. I know there's a couple of questions, and then we've got to move on here.
It's a friendly suggestion to the Mayor and Town Manager on, so Catalina Drive, we actually, we allowed the water company to actually give us the money. We did the work, you know, either the town or the contractor did. Suggestion, if that happens again on one of these projects where maybe we sit down with the water company, they actually pay us, so they don't delay this another 17 weeks? We've done it at Catalina, that area, actually, the street that actually goes parallel. So we have done it. Just a suggestion, friendly suggestion. And again, my, as we, if, I know that the current contractor will be doing Meadowlark and that whole area. I recommend a meeting at the Town Hall with the residents, the contractor, and the town. Some of this can be avoided. I understand, I know it takes time, maybe, and a little more money, but a lot of folks don't read the, you know, the notices on the website or the mail, hear, "Hey, look, you got your chance to come meet the contractor." So maybe it eliminates a little bit of that, you know, developed a little bit, and they've been very successful on a lot of road projects over the last 20 years, where we've had that meeting before the work gets done. Suggestion, learning lesson, Cheryl Drive, let's do it on Meadowlark or, so again, just, you know, there's that little, and so they know, hey, they're coming, they get to know them a little bit. And like you said, I, my experience, that contractor's always done a really nice job with our residents. So just a friendly suggestion.
We do have the neighborhood meetings. I don't know what the turnout was for Cheryl, and we have not yet scheduled Meadowlark or identified a location, but I'll let you know when we do.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. We all sat here? Okay, moving onward. Under new appointments, Town Council appointed, first one is Blate Review Committee. A vacancy exists due to the resignation of Jessica Martin. Recommendation is Mary Ann Turner until 3:31 2024.
So moved.
Counselor Nelson, and is second by Counselor Santinella. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six.
Did you get Cindy?
One, two, three, four abstentions. Well, it should be seven in favor, four against. Number two, Loan Review Committee. A vacancy exists for, to the resignation of Paul Coffey. Recommendation is Suzanne Angers until 12:31 2023.
So moved.
Counselor Ludwig, and is second by Counselor Finger. All in favor?
What?
Oh, no, that's not mine.
All in favor?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Okay, it looks like we're 11-0 in favor. Next, Planning and Zoning Commission. A vacancy exists due to the resignation of Karim Majmoudar, and recommendation is Joe Mule until 12:31 2023. Counselor Finger, and is second by Counselor Ludwig. All in favor? Unanimous, 11-0. Okay, next is the Resolution authorizing the Town Manager to sign a real estate purchase contract on behalf of the Town of Enfield for the sale of $75 road. On this one, a home builder recently purchased a parcel on Post Office Road and is interested in acquiring this parcel from the town. And this has been on the market for several years with no bites, so we'd like to recommend approval so that the parcel is, once again, returned to the grant list. And the resolution is now therefore be resolved that Ellen Zappo Sassu, Town Manager or her designee, is authorized to sign the real estate purchase contract on behalf of the Town of Enfield for the sale of $75 road to VH LLC. And be it further resolved that Ellen Zappo Sassu, the Town Manager or her designee, is authorized to sign all documents, including the deed on behalf of the Town of Enfield pertaining to the sale of the property of VH LLC, subject to the review and approval by the Town Attorney, date prepared 9/7/2023, prepared by the Office of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
Counselor Mangini, and is second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion on this? Sheila Rollcall?
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sikala?
Four.
Mayor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Hopkins?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
And Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Eleven in favor and none against.
Item C, Resolution authorizing the Town Manager to sign and submit a grant application to the State of Connecticut Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. Once again, be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the Town Manager, Ellen Zappo Sassu, to sign and submit the grant application in the name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield with the State of Connecticut Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, and to affix the corporate seal, date prepared 9/18/2023, prepared by Stephen M. Hall, Emergency Management Director.
So moved.
Counselor Nelson, and is second by Deputy Mayor Sikala. Any discussion on this? I see none. Sheila Rollcall, please.
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sikala?
Four.
Mayor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Hopkins?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Eleven in favor and none against.
Item D, the Resolution to appropriate funds for the school security grant of $90,320.95. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is made from the CNR Fund Revenue Fiscal Year '23-24. The school security grant for $90,320.95 to the CNR Fund's school security equipment, other equipment, for that amount of $90,320.95. Date prepared 9/13/2023, prepared by the Town Manager.
So moved.
Deputy Mayor Sikala, and is second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion on this? Sheila Rollcall?
Counselor Nelson?
Four.
Counselor Pisner?
Four.
Counselor Santinella?
Four.
Counselor Ungeyer?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sikala?
Four.
Mayor Crisati?
Four.
Counselor Despard?
Four.
Counselor Finger?
Four.
Counselor Hopkins?
Four.
Counselor Ludwig?
Four.
And Counselor Mangini?
Four.
Eleven in favor and none against.
Okay, item E is a Resolution to authorize non-union wage increases for full and part-time eligible employees. Once again, as indicated in the memo, that receive the cost of living increases for these employees who are not in the union are organized and planned during the budget process, so there is no budget impact. I don't know, Steve, if you have any comment or anything? No, okay. All right. So be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby approve in accordance with the wishes of the Town Council and adherence to the policy and procedure established by the Town Manager that Section 1, the aggregate sum of $150,435 in COLA wage increases, is authorized for all 50 qualified, non-union, full-time employees of the Town of Enfield. Section 2, the aggregate sum of $30,342 in COLA wage increases, is authorized for all 35 qualified, non-union, regular, part-time employees of the Town of Enfield. Section 3, the application of the increases referenced above shall be applied retroactively to the date of July 1, 2023. Section 4, the aggregate sum of $28,374 in wage adjustment to increase the hourly rate for all 15 crossing guards to $20 an hour, applied prospectively, is authorized for all qualified, non-union, school crossing guards for the Town of Enfield, prepared by the Town Manager's office.
So moved.
Deputy Mayor Sikala, and is second by Counselor Nelson. Any discussion on this?
Yes.
We'll first go to Counselor Ludwig.
Just clarification through the Mayor to the Town Manager. Section 1, is that, these are department heads? Or, I'm sorry, Assistant Town Manager?
Department heads, all non-union personnel in confidential positions, they're sprinkled throughout town.
Section 2, can you explain to me, non-union regular, just some examples?
We got, let's see, I'm drawing a blank here. People in the rec department, camp counselor are running when the camps, the summer camps, things like that, lifeguard, I think they would be part of that.
Does ECD see any of all those programs?
No, they were excluded because they already received the raise early in the year by the state, and I think there's another one coming. So we didn't want a double windfall for them.
Thank you. I may just have to...
Okay, thanks. Counselor Finger?
Thank you, Mayor. Through the mayor, the Assistant Town Manager, HR Director slash motorcyclist now. The cost of living adjustment, that is not a, it's just for one year, right? It's not, or it's going to be continuing every year at the 3.25?
It's only applied for one year. You're only voting on it for one year. Unlike collective bargaining agreements where you can vote for three years in a row, bargain agreements where you can vote for three years in a row, this is a one-year thing. We have to come through every year as a non-union.
Right, because other unions just get the increase and that's it. And the, when you said it was other non-unions, that also includes, obviously, be open to everybody, that includes the staff that we have sitting here next to my right, which is right here.
Right.
Not you, though, not the town attorney, I will refrain him from that. And the other thing I got is the, the crossing guards, I wish they could make more. I wish, I wish we can get more. I mean, there's money that's being saved on this, and I don't want to see that money go just flung away in other places. I like to see it to be, the crossing guards protect our children, the people of this town, their children to get to schools, you know, and home. You know, that's a very important job, these people take it very seriously, they have their cones out there, they're wearing their vest, they're smiling, they're waving. And yes, you do see some officers out there, I just think that $20 to me is, even though they're getting a raise, it's really kind of, it's not enough. And a child's cost, a child's cost is more than $20 an hour.
Just to echo what you're saying, councillor Finger, right now we pay the minimum wage, the last applicant failed his drug test for cocaine use. So, when, we don't have enough crossing guards, which is the case, we have to use our police officers, which is not the highest and best use of their time, with all the issues going on with traffic and whatnot. So, we're paying our, some crossing guards a lot of money when their police officers are doing it. So, we thought $20, I checked some in the market area, $18, $19 an hour, I wanted to, that's why we came up with one.
Yeah, that was my next question for you, was, did you check the local areas about?
Yeah, well, Weatherfield's at 1939, some other town, let's see, $18 an hour in East Hartford. So, I have a sprinkling of some towns that are, let's see, what's another town? I wanted to make sure that we weren't losing, or losing to local businesses, like being a greeter at a department store or something.
Thank you very much, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Sheila Roll call.
Councillor Nelson.
Four.
Councillor Pisner.
Four.
Councillor Santinella.
Four.
Councillor Ungeyer.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Four.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Despard.
Four.
Councillor Finger.
Four.
Councillor Hopkins.
Four.
Councillor Ludwig.
Stayed.
Councillor Mangini.
Four.
Ten in favor, none against, and one abstention.
Okay, item F, resolution to approve the revised job descriptions of the Director of Economic and Community Development and Community Development Specialist positions. I just want to make sure that everybody is aware, and the public is aware, that our Economic and Community Development Director, Nelson Terracio, has given notice and will be returning to work for the State of Connecticut next month. So, these two job descriptions were reviewed, and staff is recommending updating the language. So, be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby approve the revised Director of Economic Community Development and Community Development Specialist job descriptions, date prepared 9/14/2023, prepared by Stephen Belinda, Assistant Town Manager.
So moved.
Councillor Mangini, and is second by deputy mayor Sikala. Any discussion on this? First, we'll go to councillor Finger, then we'll go to councillor Pisner.
Thank you, mayor. Through the mayor, again, back to you, Steve, is, it says here that both these changes are cost neutral, and both these positions are non-union. So, by the time this gets out, and some get hired or you're promoting within, are they going to be eligible for the one we just passed for the wage increases of 3.25? Are they going to be eligible for that?
Well, deputy, let's see, they both would be eligible for, well, if we fill, we're changing the salary grade for both positions, correct? So, when we go out there, we need to be competitive, yeah. These, you know, Governor Lamont just did a, Duncan Park, they have hundreds of jobs open in Hartford, too. They're recruiting and they're poaching people like deputy director, deputy of Economic and Community Development Director Nelson, that's why he's went back to the state. So, yeah, we want to set the bar where it's going to be, so we're, we're current with the market rates. Because if we don't, if they don't get the raise, then, then we lose, then we're, we go one step down again. So, we have to stay competitive with the market rate. Hartford has 100 openings, 300 openings in just the city alone. And that, they're grooming, they're going after us, I'm getting calls.
So the one, so the one word answer is yes?
Yes, but I like to give more, more background on why we need to be competitive.
I got it, thank you so much, thank you, mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Pisner.
To the mayor, to, to our assistant town manager, human resources. So, looking through this, I'm seeing a couple of things, I mean, it's saying here that planning and zoning isn't going to be a part of this, where it says other job functions. I mean, I do think the new person should have knowledge of planning and zoning. It seems like that's crossed off a lot on this. Under knowledge and skills, you know, land use, it takes out planning and zoning. And the other thing that is crossed out is grants. And I know Nelson was huge in getting our town grants, he got one historical, I mean, maybe I'm, but again, if you look under other job functions, that's all taken out, and that had a lot of planning and zoning in it. If you look here, under knowledge and skill, in the field of planning and economic development, it says land use, planning, zoning, environment impact. So, I just want to make sure that the new person coming in is still going to be versed in planning and zoning and grants and, and state statute on how to get, so when people come to town, this new person will be able to help them. I just want to make sure I'm reading this, I don't want things taken out if it's going to hurt.
Well, we don't think it's going to hurt. We, and actually, those revisions that you specifically are calling out about planning and land use were mine. I believe that two things are at play here. One is, as you are aware, this position used to report to Lori. That was when he was the deputy director. This job description has some leftover components from when Lori Witten, as our town planner, was doing both. Those are the references to planning and land use. I do not believe that the economic development director needs to be deeply versed in planning and land use because they're working collaboratively with the town planner, because those positions are now separate. This department has been broken out and is on its own, no longer tucked under the planning department. Also, I think that it is probably going to detract from people applying, because this is a very difficult position without having to deal with land use. Nelson is stretched very thin, Steve and I help, and other members of the staff help as much as possible, but he has a lot going on, the downtown stuff, I mean, coming up with the mall prospect, the TIF funding. There's a lot going on that he is doing more than 40 hours a week, and the planning and land use doesn't even come into play. So, I felt that having a more focused economic development function would attract a higher level candidate who has more of the economic development experience, as we're in these phases of attracting businesses, retaining businesses, and working on these transportation projects, like, you know, with the rail and everything else. So, I think that we can all work to each other's strengths without it having to be spelled out. That doesn't mean, and I think it's in here somewhere, you know, some knowledge of, as opposed to how it was worded. In terms of grants, Nelson did a phenomenal job with grants. We believe that most departments should be doing a lot of their grants themselves, and we've now bolstered that by using some of the ARPA funds that you've put aside to have on-call grant writers. They're the ones that have done some of the larger grants than last year, because even though he excels at it, Nelson didn't have time to do those big applications. And the one that we did, we were here till all hours of the night, making sure we made those deadlines. This is a better system for everyone to focus our resources where we need them the most.
Again, it's not him writing the grants, but somebody's knowledgeable that the grants are out there. That's, that's what I'm more concerned about. And knowing the state statute, again, historical society, that type of thing. So, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this? Okay, Sheila Roll.
John.
Oh, John, okay.
So, I'm sorry, just one question on, on the grant piece, because I agree it is really important. Is our grant writer still, do we have the grant writer still here that we hired using some of the ARPA funds, like, two now? So, are we able to kind of put some of that piece with them? Is that in their wheelhouse, or are the grants that Nelson worked on sort of a different caliber that, that wouldn't be in their wheelhouse?
No, I think it's in everybody's wheelhouse. Nelson obviously was, and I think to councillor Pisner's point, it's more about procurement and being aware of where the grant opportunities exist, and we do have that across all the departments. We are using the on-call grant writers now because it's a more efficient use of time, because Nelson doesn't have as much time as he did maybe a few years ago. There's also a lot more money available, which means we have a lot more opportunities, which makes this grant writing arrangement very beneficial for the town.
Great, thanks.
Sheila Roll call.
Councillor Nelson.
Four.
Councillor Pisner.
Four.
Councillor Santinella.
Four.
Councillor Ungeyer.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Four.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Despard.
Four.
Councillor Finger.
Four.
Councillor Hopkins.
Four.
Councillor Ludwig.
Four.
And councillor Mangini.
Four.
Eleven in favor and none against.
Okay, item G. Item G is a resolution to settle the property tax assessment appeal for 96 Phoenix Avenue. This is something that we discussed earlier tonight, so we're going to be bringing this forward. Do we have to make a motion for this?
Make a motion forward, whatever.
It's, it's, okay, all right, well, then, we will then move forward with the recommendation. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby authorize the town attorney, James N. Talberg, or his designee, to settle the outstanding tax assessment appeal in the following action. Silver Phoenix LLC versus Town of Enfield, docket number HHB CV22-6073534S. The fair market value of the property known as 96 Phoenix Ave. to be reduced to $4,200,000. Date prepared September 18, 2023, prepared by the Office of the Town Attorney.
So moved.
Deputy Mayor Sikala, and second by councillor Nelson. Any discussion on this, which I think we've already discussed? Sheila Roll call.
Councillor Nelson.
Four.
Councillor Pisner.
Four.
Councillor Santinella.
Four.
Councillor Ungeyer.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Sikala.
Four.
Mayor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Despard.
Four.
Councillor Finger.
Four, as long as Jim doesn't, doesn't pound it off on somebody else.
Councillor Hopkins.
Four.
Councillor Ludwig.
Four.
And councillor Mangini.
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Okay, next, Public Communications. Once again, you'll have three minutes to address the council, and please be respectful while you come up. We will go, Mr. Hamery.
Good evening, Joshua Hamery, 52 New King Street. Several things. First off, everybody sitting in front of me is a volunteer. Nobody up there is getting paid, and it doesn't matter what board you're on, what committee you're on, nobody up there is getting a dime. Everybody over here is compensated hopefully nicely for it. So, I commend you for doing the thankless jobs that you're getting, that you're doing. So, having said that, councillor Ludwig, the Constitution applies to agnostic and atheist alike. It's not a God-given document, it's a living, breathing document that's been amended many times, and is probably subject to further amendments in the, in the future. Councillor Nelson, you commented on the homeless in town. I appreciate the fact that you recognize that they're there. And having worked with the homeless populations in the greater Hartford region in the past, and in Enfield, those are not out of, out of town people. Those are Enfield's own homeless people. So, there's a lot to be said about that, and very few solutions to how to permanently house them. I can't stress enough how important it was for the town manager's explanation of what the Alliance District process has been and will be. Big takeaways from that, separating the financial part of it from the, how we got to that part. The Alliance District status, and this has been gone over ad nauseam, is largely in part due to socioeconomic status. The town's demographics have changed over the years. We have a higher poverty rate in town. This is not strictly an academic achievement marker. But consider that for a minute. Because of the socioeconomic statuses of the town, that we've had an increase in the, those that are not able to make ends meet, those are, those stressors of being less fortunate will impact the ability to achieve academically. It's just the nature of the beast. And it's worth highlighting in terms of the financial aspects of the status of being in Alliance District, that the formula, as convoluted as it is, and as difficult it is, as it is to grasp, does not have a foundation in the past, the funding doesn't follow the last five years of that Alliance District marker, it goes back 10 years. So, this discussion about the Alliance District status needs to be held in earnest and in honest discussions. I appreciate the opportunity, thank you.
Well, I have a little different take than the previous speaker. To become a member of the Enfield Town Council, individuals run a political campaign to ask voters to elect them to serve.
Excuse me, Nick, just name and address.
I'm sorry, again, I thought, my first time around, okay, Nikki Price, 1324 Enfield Street. I disagree with the previous speaker. To become a member of the Enfield Town Council, individuals run a political campaign to ask voters to elect them to serve as a representative in town government. Yes, being an unelected member of the Enfield Town Council is an unpaid vocation. Any individuals thinking they are volunteers first on this town council should not seek elective office in the town Enfield. Now, I'm also want to question Matt Despard, pouncing on Carol Hall regarding the educational cost sharing by not, because of other towns receiving more money. Well, I'd like to point out, Councilman Despard, there's two representatives to the state of Connecticut, Tom Aroni and Carol Hall. Now, if you know anything about Kessel, Aroni, and Hall, they will each tell you that they work wonderfully together, because their interest is for the town of Enfield, not for them politically as members of Republican or Democratic. So, I think you should think twice before you want to pounce on somebody and think of the other person who is a representative of this town in the Democratic side. Thank you.
Good evening, Chris Reyno, 2 Jewell Street. This actually goes well. So, councillor, I'm sorry, Representatives Hall, Aroni, and Senator Kessel may work well together, but it doesn't seem like they're working well for the town currently. I know it's late, so I'll try to keep this quick. But I think some of the concern, or blame, whatever you want to call it, being, is being aimed in the wrong direction, and frankly, it's unhelpful. It's disheartening to me that we don't have better representation in Hartford. If Representative Hall spent as much time as councillor Pisner and others have here tonight advocating for us on the floor at the Capitol for education funds during that time in which unprecedented monies were being sent to other towns and not Enfield, we wouldn't be having this conversation tonight, or for the last however long this has been going on. So, I just ask those who support that budget, how they came. Contact those representatives, ask them how they came to a place to vote and approve a budget that gave increased funding to other towns and cities in Connecticut and stayed silent while money allocated to Enfield remained unchanged. The reality is that the budget, sorry, the reality is budget negotiations are complex, and should, we should be spending our time working together to keep track of those issues. I hope this council and elected officials in Hartford can keep the focus on improving education for our kids, so that we can move forward and be the best community that we can be. Thank you.
George Young, 8 Holly Lane. The current concert series that was going on during the summer, I tell you, I enjoyed a couple of them. The current concert series that was going on during the summer, I tell you, I enjoyed a couple of them, including Trailer Trash, believe it or not. And they were well attended, and I'm glad that they opened up the bottom here so people could use the restrooms because that was an overwhelming crowd. And the other thing, I wanted to address the Councilor Pisner's question on the 1.4 million. I can tell you that the best explanation has been done by the superintendent of schools. I don't know if you saw it or were there, but he had the best explanation. And he can pretty much explain the gap between the budget and what was given by the state for the 30 or 33 underperforming schools. I thought it was an excellent explanation, and if you use any of his excerpts from his explanation, I think that might answer your question, so thank you, that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, Karen LaPlante, 166 North Maple Street. Thank you for passing the changes to the ordinance, but I still think we're not quite there. I think the water company had some very compelling reasons for wanting you to vote yes and take that item off the list. And I'm sorry that the letter wasn't read to all of you so you could fully understand their situation. So I'm just going to read a couple paragraphs because I've only got three minutes. With this letter, CWC requests that the council revise the open space ordinance, assessment ordinance, to allow water company lands to be eligible for open space designation. This revision would better align with the Enfield's plan of conservation and development, which states that PA 490 is a powerful tool that protects undeveloped space. The aquifer recharge area of Connecticut waters, spring lots, O'Brady, and Powder Hollow wellfields combined comprise approximately 3,860 acres of land in Enfield. As stated in the POCD, the land use activities on these lands directly impacts the quantity and the quality of the public drinking water supply and therefore elevates the importance of aquifer protection. To protect the public drinking water supply, CWC is motivated to purchase parcels of land within our aquifer protection areas with the intent of keeping those lands in their natural state. Water companies can therefore be a valuable partner in acquiring open space priority parcels as described in the POCD that fall within the boundaries of the water supply lands. Excluding water companies from the PA 490 open space designation may be a disincentive for CWC to pursue acquiring open space land in Enfield since the cost of land, including the tax burden, is passed on to our drinking water customers. Many of CWC customers are also residents of the town of Enfield. Therefore, when our customers benefit, the residents of Enfield benefit as well. It is important that water companies are able to take advantage of PA 490 whenever possible. As stated in the PA 490 Connecticut General Statute, Section 12-107A, quote, "It is in the public interest to encourage the preservation of open space land in order to conserve the state's natural resources and to provide for the welfare and happiness of the habitants of the state," end quote. Section 12-107B 3B further states that open space land means the preservation or restriction of the use of which would protect natural streams or water supply. Therefore, excluding water companies from taking advantage of PA 490 to protect public drinking water supply is inconsistent with the intent of this act, which is to protect and preserve open space.
Excuse me, Karen.
Is that time?
Yes.
Okay. There was more, and I wish you would all read the document. It should have been read into the record, and I'm sorry that it wasn't.
Melanie Dubio, 4 Francis Avenue. I just want to apologize for calling out any counselors, and sometimes I get caught up in the moment, especially when it comes to my family and kids. But I would deeply appreciate if you guys could rethink the temporary parking ban on Francis Avenue from 8 to 6, and, you know, if you could give it even 120 days, and let's see how it goes, and then, you know, come back to it, and I would greatly, we would greatly appreciate that. Yeah, thank you again. Again, I apologize for getting hyped up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Robert Pokowski, 21 Francis. On that same theme, I was thinking, look, if the issue is just, Councilor Ludwig and Pisner, if the issue is just temporary versus permanent, let's do it. I mean, temporary is okay, but the main thing here is towing. Just temporary as it was before doesn't really do much. We want a little more beefiness, a little bit more in the right direction. I mean, you know what I really want as an end result. But if we have to settle for 120 days with towing, I'm for that. Councilor Nelson, I criticize the town manager and everybody up here on a regular basis, regularly and equally. Tonight was the Democrats' night because of that poster. But you've all gotten it from me before, she's gotten it from me before too, and she's part of the team. I don't really know, sometimes, you know, technically she reports to them, sometimes maybe they report to her. I'm not really sure how that goes, but she's part of the team, and she does a great job for them. So she, yeah, but that's not a good thing on this issue. She does a great job for them on this issue, but anybody who, this is a moral issue, not a political issue. Anybody who is not on our side on this issue, I don't have much sympathy for. So if I have to criticize her, I'll do it, and I've criticized you in the past, in the past, and we'll do it again, and I make no apologies. Okay, now, the genie snuck out of the bottle. You can't put it back in. We've known your sentiment from the very beginning, and it's just proof beyond doubt that this fundraiser celebration party at Jimmy's Pub is borderline unethical because it shows your complete bias towards this from the beginning. But basically, you can't put this genie out in the bottle, and the voters are paying attention. The integrity of this whole thing has gone right down the toilet with that poster, and I'm glad it came out because I knew it all along. Can't put that genie back in the bottle, just like Mr. Dresnick, Drezick cannot put Pizza Gate, that thing, back in the bottle. It came out, it's out there, you can't turn back time. Councilor Sikala, I spoke about the Mardi Gras parking lot, and I related that to our situation on Francis Avenue. I spoke about the Mardi Gras morals, values, and standards, and I spoke in general terms without singling anybody out about the Democratic side of this building, morals and standards and values, and I never singled you out for anything. Thank you for the apology, but the genie is out of the bottle. And I'm glad it is because everybody finally sees the extreme bias that's been going on from the very beginning. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else that would like to come forward?
Gretchen Viferhoff, 4 Summers Road. I also want to thank you all, and I want to thank the town manager for all the work that she did on the open space assessment ordinance. Conservation Commission started working on this like two years ago, investigating this. So it was a long time coming, but I think it sort of went into high gear for the last few months. And I think it's going to be a real benefit to our town and to a lot of property owners. I also want to say that Maria and Nelson Teresa were great employees of the town, great advocates for the town, enjoyed working with both of them when I was on Inland Wetlands. Had a lot of interactions with Maria at that, well, not a lot, a few. And Nelson has really been a great person to work with many organizations. He's helped the Hazardville Institute. He got us to apply for a grant that I never thought that we would qualify for or get. And it isn't just his expertise at advising you how to put these grants together, but it's also the contacts that he had. So he was really very helpful to many of us. And, you know, you all had very complimentary things to say about Tammy Rodriguez, and rightfully so. It was very brave of her to come up and tell her story. But I think that something got missed by just about everybody in this room. The last thing that she said was, "Be kind. It doesn't cost anything, and it may even do you good." So I heard Mr. Antonella and Marie Pisner and Bob Crisati and Gina Sikala, because, and probably everybody else in this room has at some time had nasty things said about them, untrue things said about them. I also did have things said about me to this body that were untruthful. And so words and deeds do matter. In person, on social media, and I wish that people would really take that to heart. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to approach the council? Okay. Counselor, excuse me, Public Communications are over. Any final comments by counselors?
Councilor Nelson. Okay, first, Josh Hammeray came forward, and he talked about how the town is getting poorer, and with the more low income, it brings down the quality of education. His words, "I am shocked to hear a Board of Ed member say that considering his party wants to bring in more subsidized apartments." So if that's the belief of their Board of Education, what's going to happen when all these affordable apartments come in? Question for you guys. Next would be, Chris Renaud came forward and wants to talk a bunch of trash about one of our state representatives, and also, Matt, you did the same thing, but not the other one. You just sat here and bashed Carol about numbers.
Chris said all of them, and the reason why I said Hall is because she's the only one I hear on the radio or on Facebook.
Yeah. I have the floor. So the question I have for Chris is, one, it sounds like you may make a run for the 59th. You've been in town two years, we've never seen you until recently. Now you're running for council, and you want to start trashing volunteers who work for the town. So the question would be, how much did Representative Hall bring the town of Enfield this year? Do you know? The person who wrote your text, did they tell you that? I don't think so. And the number is from our state reps, both of them. Because I give State Representative Arnon and Hall the equal credit. They brought in $32,818,263.11. That's not nothing. So they are trying. And yes, Enfield has been on the short end of the stick lately, and we discussed it in leadership because there is a problem, and we're trying to get to the bottom of it with our state reps. So to blame them is absurd, and I'm sticking up for Tom and Carol because I'm tired of them getting blamed for all this. And to have a new person in town do it is absurd.
Counselor Despard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to clarify, Ken, and want to answer Ms. Price's question, that the reason why I named Ms. Hall is because she's the only one that I've seen or heard go on the radio and be out there disparaging the town and disparaging the budget process that the town always goes through. So that's why I mentioned her. But sure, the fact that, you know, we're not getting, you know, when there's monumental funding going to other towns, and we're not getting that, I think that certainly they all bear some blame in that.
Counselor Mangini.
Thank you. It's no secret that it is an election time. I am terribly, terribly, terribly disappointed in everybody. I have never seen such a deplorable conduct by public, by council. We, as human beings, need to be role models for children. And I mean this very sincerely, kindness. We drive home kindness, kindness. Are we kind? No, we're not kind. We're ripping each other apart. This is garbage, people. Attacking our town staff, our town manager, especially our finance director. What? This is insane. These are professional people that we pay to do a damn good job, and we are very lucky to have them in the seats they're in. We up here are volunteers. And, you know, I hate to say this, I'm going to agree with Ken Nelson. You can fall over now. But Ken said something earlier that was very profound, and what he said was very true, that we need to start respecting others. And where are we? So you know what, going forward, I'm not going to feed into any of this garbage anymore. I feel for the people of Francis Avenue. I don't know what the answer is. And here's another point of information. I don't do karaoke. I am poor at singing. People would pay to have me not sing. So I want to get that out there. However, the main message here is that we are rotten to each other, and it's got to stop. It's really got to stop. Thank you.
Is there anybody else here? Counselor Antonella.
So through the mayor to the town manager. For the next meeting, I would like us to explain to people what workforce housing is so that they understand that what we are trying to put in Thompsonville, in spite of the insistence that it is something else, that it is housing for young people, waitresses, young college grads, people who can find a place to live affordably instead of the rumor that it's more Section 8 housing because we know that that's not what it is, and we need to have a clean explanation of what that looks like for the community, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Finger.
Thank you, Mayor. First thing is, I want to thank the town manager who made it publicly that her and her staff does not feel like they're being attacked by anybody on this council. That is what she said. If you didn't hear it, go back and watch it on YouTube. So that's the one thing I would straighten out right there. I don't attack people. I make my promises and I keep them. And I want to say that a promise I would make is that, or something I'm going to say publicly is, I think John Wilcox is one of the finest directors in the state of Connecticut. I've known John for a long time. I've organized his office for him many times when he, we did some renovations in there when I was at B&amp;G. John is a downright earthy person. Nobody's perfect. None of us are perfect. If you think you're perfect, get off the styes right now. Nobody is, especially you, Matt. But I just want to thank you for saying that, the town manager, and John, thank you for what you do. As far as anybody else attacking anybody, Cindy, I think it was Cindy that said- that says it is election season, so that, and the last thing I'll say is probably because Matt's going to run against Carol next time. Thank you.
Well, no, hold on, hold on. Everybody's had their little, you know, two cents to their little final politic, and I'm not going to be talking about politicking. I'm talking about us coming in here and working on an agenda. If I would say the amount of time that we spend on the agenda, as compared to what we're covering off-agenda, it's absolutely deplorable, to be honest with you. With all these bickering back and forth, let's stick to business. There are three meetings left, maybe two, maybe one for some of you, who knows? Let's stick to business when we're out here. This is very embarrassing up here. Time in and time out, we have to listen to fake news. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?